Good evening, I call this meeting of the Quincy City Council Monday, June 27th to order. Madam Clerk, if you will call the votes please.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Crowe.
Present.
Counselor Vaughn.
Present.
Counselor Finn.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor LaFors.
Present.
Counselor Rhea. Counselor Calhoun.
Present.
President Hughes.
Present.
Lead members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you'll all stand and join me in a moment of silence this evening, if we could think of the victims and the families, the Orlando terror attack, and all victims of acts of terror and violence, think of our first responders, those who protect us in the armed services here and abroad, and just turn our attention to those folks this evening. Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Clerk, if you will read the opening of the meeting law.
This is Madam General Law, Chapter 30, A, Section 21. Pursuing to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting and may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attending said therefore advise that such recording or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. If you will begin with the first item on the agenda.
First, we go to honor Reverend Ian Suzadel of the Quincy Point Congregational Church.
Counselor Crowe.
Thank you very much, Madam President. It is with great enthusiasm, but an interesting amount of sadness as well that he takes the time here this evening to recognize the strong work and advocacy done by Reverend Ian Suzadel. Those folks know us, as familiar with Reverend Ian, Reverend at Quincy Point Congregational for quite some time. And one of the neat things, as you know, getting involved in the community, you get to meet some of the community leaders. If you've ever had the opportunity to attend a service down at Quincy Point Congregational, there is just so much love and compassion in that room, and at the forefront of everything is Reverend Ian Suzadel. She's always got a smile, she's always got a hug, she's always got a, you know, a nice thing to say about people. It's not so much what she says to you, but it's what she does when nobody's looking. And I think that is such a defining characteristic of what makes, you know, an individual special. Yeah, just to give you an example, if I showed up, they had a send-off party for Reverend Ian about a week, two ago? It was up at Patton Field, and I show up there, and it means to me Reverend Ian, at her own retirement party, is, has quasi-fundraiser going on for that inclusive playground we were trying to get done in Quincy Point. And this is at her retirement party, you know, and she coordinated this all behind the scenes. That's the type of stuff that gets, you know, gets me excited. I'm just, I could go on and on, but it's just, it's a pleasure to know her, and she dressed in the body she was in, too fine. But I did want to congratulate her on her retirement and read the commendation, which is as follows. In recognition of your retirement and appreciation of your 15 years of devoted service to the parishioners of Quincy Point Congregational Church and the Quincy Point neighborhood, your passion and hard work in the many outreach efforts for the city of Quincy have proven to benefit so many in your parish and the city. You've been a genuine inspiration throughout the community. Congratulations and best wishes on your endeavors. And I just want to reiterate that, you've been a genuine inspiration throughout the community. So if you could, please welcome to the podium Reverend Ian Suzadel.
Well, this makes my heart glad and I'm indeed honored, so thank you very much. I love the city of Quincy. I feel like I should tap my little red shoes together and say, "There's no place like Quincy, there's no place like Quincy, there's no place like Quincy." We have extraordinary history, we have a stunning shoreline, we have excellent schools, and we have the most creative collaborations I have ever seen in my 40 years of ministry among the businesses and the nonprofits and governments and faith communities. And that has just been marvelous. I want to thank the leaders of the city, many of you, we have worked together. I want you to know I admire you. Our leaders have this wonderful combination of vision and determination, and that goes far. And so I am grateful. It has been a tremendous blessing for me to be the pastor of the Quincy Point Congregational Church for 15 years. Our folks are just like the rest of the folks in Quincy. They are compassionate, they're skillful, they're loving, and they are welcoming. So it has been home to me. I'm not going away. I'll still be nearby, so after I do all of my long list of house projects and garden projects, I'll be looking for some volunteer work to do. So I did want to, Ray I mentioned, we had a quick fundraiser, so this is an initial contribution for the Play For All Playground. I think that is fabulous, and if you're already fully subscribed, I'd pass it on to the next neighborhood that I hope will have, and there'll be more coming after that, so thank you all. This is my sister Gail Saxton, who's here from St. Louis.
We'll take a brief recess for a quick picture with the Reverend, and just congratulations to you on your retirement, and we wish you well, and thank you for all your service to the community. Thank you. Take three quicks. So are you.
Oh, yeah, I'm coming. Only you can give out a comment.
Gail, come on.
Morning, Gail.
Scott. We have paparazzi. I'm short, so I can't. Keep the mouth nice. Good. Nice. Congratulations. All right, well, thank you very much. I do want to acknowledge this evening the presence of former Mayor Jane Sheetz, who is here with us with his government class, so we welcome Mayor Sheetz and his. Madam Clerk, if you will call the next item.
Yes, number one, 2016-181. Confirmation of the city clerk appointment for the Assistant City Clerk. And as you know, the Assistant Clerk's position has been vacant since April 25th, 2016. I have interviewed Mr. Joseph Newton, and I am confident that he is qualified to fill the position. With the council's approval, I would like Mr. Newton to stand as Assistant City Clerk effective immediately.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I recognize Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm honored to be able to make a motion to approve, I hope, the whole, and I'm sure the next Assistant City Clerk, Joseph Newton, of Woodsex. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Counselor Calhoun.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to second the nomination of Joe Newton to the Assistant City Clerk position. I will say that I did get a text from Brett Hanley trying to object, but I'm just going to whip him over like everyone else did when he was on the council. I think Joe's a perfect person to take over this position. Being a former member of our body, he's somebody who understands the council's working, understands well our role and our responsibilities, and I think he'll be a welcome addition to the Clerk Council team. As anyone who knows him knows, he's easily approachable, and he really takes Joe Shea's philosophy of the city clerk job to heart in even what he's doing now, and that's that philosophy that I spoke when Joe left, about always helping people, really going hard of your way, and above and beyond to make sure that no matter who the person is or what their problem is, that you try to help them, that you try and solve their problem. And I'll cast this vote tonight in support of Joe Newton with the expectation that will be graced with at least one, at least one signature high-eal laugh per meeting. But honestly, I can think of no one better to fill this position than Joe. And both personally and professionally, I'm just thrilled to have him come aboard, thrilled to rescue him from the DPW, welcome him aboard where we can really better put to use than they can at the EPW. Joe, it is a very unique set of skills, so with that, I'll second the nomination of Joe Newton.
Thank you, Counselor Calhoun. The motion made. Seconded, Counselor LaFors, unmotioned.
To you, Madam President. Joe, maybe you can help Counselor Calhoun, which you get work on his remarks with St. Patrick today without humor. I will tell you, you have been such a tremendous mentor to us. You've really been there, go through us, situations arise from, you know, when I was first running and providing, you know, the council. You have really been someone who has a great passion for the city, knows the city, and just goes above and beyond, has been so helpful in many situations, so I am very pleased to support and I'm made sure for this city clerk this evening. Well deserved, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor LaFors. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counselor Long.
Thank you, Madam President. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues as well, you know, Joe Newton having another counselor up here would be great, and we're going to get that and much stronger recommendation to have him up here, and you know, the guy knows the city inside and out, you know, and he believes Quincy, and that's the type of person that we want up here, and to help us all and understand what's going on with the city in the past, and today, and in the future. I'm strongly support this, and I'm looking forward to, you know, having a little bit of fun up here, you know, and actually, you know, rescuing you from the DPW as well. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counselor King.
I'm the one person who actually served on the city council, Joe Newton. Let me just say, fasten your seatbelts. Again, I can tell you how much I'm looking forward to Joe working with the clerks' office, and I think specifically it fits well, some of the strategic thought that's been going on in relation to tying his office more closely together. Who better than a person, particularly around issues related to constituent services and the like, has such a knowledge and experience base as you have, so again, I can't wait. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Very well, Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, it is necessary to state the name of Joseph Newton when he votes, so Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Counselor King.
Joseph Newton.
Counselor Crowe.
Joseph Newton.
Counselor Vaughn.
Joseph Newton.
Counselor Finn.
Joseph Newton.
Counselor Harris.
Joseph Newton.
Counselor LaFors.
Joseph Newton.
Counselor Calhoun.
Joseph Newton.
President Hughes.
Justice King.
Lead members.
Congratulations.
He's been up here for a long time.
You're already doing it wrong.
There it is. New digs, new digs.
I, Joe Newton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith of allegiance.
That I bear true faith of allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I will support the Constitution thereof.
And I will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Joe Newton.
I, Joe Newton.
Do solemnly swear, affirm.
Do solemnly swear, affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Cuppied upon me.
Cuppied upon me.
As Assistant City Clerk.
As Assistant City Clerk.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Understanding.
Understanding.
Aggravate.
Aggravate.
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of the City Council.
And the ordinances of the City Council.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Joe Newton.
I, Joe Newton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
All right, congratulations, Joe, to you and to your family. I know they are all here, and they're very excited for you.
So thank the counselor, the councilors, and study again, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, do you want me to do a picture, Joe, with your family? No, they don't want a picture with us. Great, we'll do a small recess, yes, we'll come right back. Bring into the center of the well, yes. Yes, yeah, everybody. Nice. Oh, yeah. We need a young race, yeah. Joe, you come in the middle. Just kids, yeah, I know, yeah. Yay. A photo with your family in the call. Okay, so we're done. Hallset?
Yes, yes.
All right, very well, we'll gap it back in. Thank you. Very well. So on that note that the new Assistant Clerk mentioned, we do have a very aggressive agenda this evening, and so this evening, we will be paying strict adherence and attention to Rule 10, which will ask councilors to keep their remarks within 15 minutes, and everyone will have a chance to speak for 15 minutes first, and then on the second round, the answer to a question will be limited to five minutes. So again, because of the aggressive nature of our agenda this evening, as well as our ruling recess, we will be adhering to Rule 10 of the rules of the Quincy City Council for 15 minutes. The clerk of committees has a timer at which she will indicate when you have two minutes left out of your 15 minutes. So at the 13-minute mark, she will just alert you, or alert me, and I will alert you, so please just pay attention and be mindful of that again, our agenda is very aggressive. At this time, we will move to item number two on the agenda.
Thank you. 2016-182. Upon the recommendation of his honor of the mayor, a sum of $1 million is here to appropriate to the Swan Point Park Pier Fund to be expended for the purposes of rehabilitation of the pier at Swan Point Park. The same can be transferred to Waterways Improvement Fund.
Okay, and I'm actually going to, before I go with the mayor's representative, I do want to acknowledge that members of our state delegation are here this evening, State Representative Bruce Ayers and Senator John Keenan. They are here this evening, and I believe they are here in support of this particular appropriation, so we appreciate you being here, and at this time, I will ask the mayor's representative to walk up to you.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Counselors, as many of you know, since the MDTA, eliminated commuter ferry services for the state delegation, led by Senator Keenan and Representative Ayers, together with Representatives Chan and Ariano, and working with the mayor, are exploring options and restoring water transportation for the citizens of Quincy. Twenty-seven miles from coastline, there's no doubt the potential that water transportation carries for our future needs. In that time, and even before that time, as I see PJ Foley in the audience, he's been working for quite some time together with Senator Keenan's office, he was probably working on during Mayor Sheetz's case as well. During that time, and before that, the conversation is focused on the potential of the docked pier and parking lot at Swan Point Park. So months ago, as part of our due diligence, he developed this water transportation option. The mayor, his team, together with the state delegation, met with officials from the Town of Winter, which this year has just started its own non-sociated ferry service that starts in downtown Boston, so we could see what we could learn from them and how they operated their system. Those discussions soon turned, circled around to the possibility for partnership with the Town of Winter. And today, because of the work of Senator Keenan, Representative Ayers, Counselor Harris, and the cooperation of the administration of Governor Charlie Baker, we are prepared to move forward with a pilot program this summer that will bring commuter ferry boat service to Swan Point Park on a trial basis. Under the plan, Winter is a seventy-passenger ferry boat, provided water connection from St. Owen to Swan Point Park to downtown Boston and to the Boston Harbor Islands. This is truly a tremendous opportunity, and will provide critical operational data as longer-term regional ferry service planning continues. Pilot program is then moving to begin in August and run through September. Before you tonight is a planned request to be needed with the necessary at Swan Point Park to provide adequate access to ferry passengers. The Department of Conservation and Recreation, again through the work of Governor Baker and Commissioner Roy, has agreed to provide the city a $50,000 grant for this work, and we are asking tonight for $100,000 to be allocated to the city's water waste fund to meet the city's commitment to making this program happen. Senator Keenan, Representative Ayers are also working on security matching appropriation of $100,000 in the state budget that could be used to support or offset the cost of those ferry repairs and other ferry associated projects in the area. Counselor Harris has communicated with members of the surrounding neighborhoods, and both Keenan, Representative Ayers have made abundantly clear their intention to keep all those neighborhoods entirely in the loop as this process moves forward. To that end, there will almost certainly be a neighborhood meeting before any program officially launches. The operational details, times, trips, those sorts of things are still being worked out, but is of critical importance to move forward tonight with this appropriation to make the necessary short-term repairs to the Swan Point Park pier. You have any packets tonight, budget estimates of this work formed by both the firm of Tanya Bond and Warden Karne, are representatives of both firms here this evening. If you have any technical questions relative to the pier work, Senator Keenan, Representative Ayers are both here to answer any questions relative to the state process and potential long-term goals. Martin here, Department of Planning Department, has been speaking with the several of the citizens. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been fortunate to walk into a situation where the experience I've had so far with our state delegation, Senator Keenan, Representative Ayers, and the mayor, and meeting with them, being equalized being in some of the meetings, and this is a terrific opportunity for the city, and it's like a broken record, it's a great opportunity for my work. So I will save a lot of 15 minutes in a short sweep, and I'd like to make a motion that we pass the appropriation of $100,000.
Motion made, seconded by Counselor LaFors. And the motion, Counselor LaFors?
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is a great opportunity to bring water transportation to the city twenty-seven miles from coastline. We are clearly, you know, a PR of our biggest challenges is traffic and parking, traffic and parking. It takes me, tomorrow I'll be driving over the bridge, and it'll probably take me hours to get over the bridge in the morning, from Boston to Boston in the morning. Being able to get those vehicles off the road, getting people to get access through the downtown Boston or to wherever we are, where we're going to be piloting this, is just create a lot of opportunity, whether it's UMass or Indiana Harbor or the airport. I really feel we need to be exploring water transportation infrastructure. I think that administration and the state delegation today have done such a phenomenal job with creating opportunity for economic development in the same location. We see that improvements being made right now in Marina Bay. This is a real victory to the city, and a place to support. I did have one question, loans to the appropriation, we have an equivalent of state funding. The equivalent of state funding pending, is there talk if it is offsetting when the funds deeply applied to the waterways? That was my question. If this is addressed, gets administered, I know it's a questionable, and Counselor LaFors?
Mr. Walker.
Yes, Counselor, good question.
Thank you. I do realize that there is more to the six-point line of water, however, I. I know they protect our waterway funds, so. I do know, it's a little more fun as well, a little more fun, but you know, I do think this is a great use of the waterway funds. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor LaFors. Counselor Finn.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm wondering if we could briefly, if consent of the body, if you could hear again from Senator Keenan and my good neighbor, Representative. Okay.
Yes, of course.
If you could for a moment, if you could.
Senator Keenan, Representative Ayers.
Good evening.
Thank you, Senator, thank you, Representative. Well, it's going to take a while to move that down. Anyway, I'm very much aware of the fact, you folks have been spending a great deal of energy and time specifically with the general development around the Swan Point Park, and then also the extension of the roadway, like golf or some things. There's a certain level of urgency, it seems, almost with this, but I just wanted to make certain, you don't see this becoming an impediment to the larger type of integrated plan that you've been working on over the past, at least a year and a half, at least over the longer?
No, I don't see it as an impediment. I see it, and I guess in terms of expectations, I see it as a process that will allow us to get information, build it to the ferry line from, we need it. to get information, build it to the ferry line from New Haven to Boston. Things such as how would work in certain parts, how would work in certain riding missions, what will the timing be, what will be the waiting times for people to vote post, those types of things. We want to kind of get expectation in shape. This is in terms of the vision. This is an opportunity that popped up rather quickly because the town of Winter had a boat, had a little bit, had some docking time in Bostonville. So we thought it would be a good opportunity to take advantage of that, get the ferry line, get all that information gathered, and use it.
So it's creating essentially an opportunity for you furthering some of the plans you've been working on with that. I am taking support, because I do think it's, again, provides that type of critical perspective just in terms of both concept of furthering the vision that you do have, and a lot of voting service out, that's gonna look like, but also in terms of just getting a sense of the entire development that we've been working on. I want to thank you very much for that, and specifically, Representative Ayers, the work you've done over time, trying to coordinate state local resources, it's been very useful as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. As Johnny indicated too, it's a small step, but it's a small step in the right direction. And we have been working very closely, you know, with the new Winton officials, you know, and once, although the schedule isn't complete yet, it will give us the opportunity after the hectic days to establish feasibility and viability of the broad picture of some of the more long-range goals and objectives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Forrest. Counselor Forrest?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everyone, Senator Keenan, Representative Ayers, and the administration, and anyone else who was involved. What a great opportunity for the city, you know, for that, for the area to have some sort of regional options. So I certainly am going to support that, and with that, I reserve maybe 14 minutes for some other time.
So I'm happy to tell you, it don't have to take 15 minutes, you could just...
Well, I may need 28, and it's 29 minutes later, so I reserve to carry over there.
No, this isn't like a lunch hour, we don't do that. Very well, Counselor Forrest?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank you, Senator Keenan, State Rep. Ayers as well, as well as the mayor, for all your hard work over the years. I know this has taken some time to really get this something running, to have this pilot program going into August and September is gonna be huge for this type of city of Quincy. We're always talking about traffic, 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 but this is gonna be an ultimate option for people to use as well. Not happening before, you know, the Harbor Express that we once had a couple of years ago, we haven't had any type of ferry service come by Quincy, Massachusetts, it's gonna be huge, you know, going in the right direction here. I was just gonna ask one question. I know we, I went to a couple of public meetings, while the FedEx building being there, and having it, half of it being public, half of it being private. Did we get to a point where that became a public road to access to the Swan Point Park? Or is that something we're working on now, you guys?
We've been working on, Representative Ayers, and I have to say, I draw particular joy from the fact that Chicago is a name, because everywhere I go, I didn't know there was a mayor.
I don't know how you feel. I mean, Counselor Forrest?
I was getting some mind wings of mine available for authorization, should the government choose to approve it. And that would allow the continuation of the road directly from Rockaway FedEx, straight out into the Swan Point Park parking lot. So that is still in the works, and that's probably the bigger vision than Counselor Forrest and Representative Ayers.
Thank you so much for all your hard work on this. Thank you. Glad to support this.
Thank you, Counselor. And I think it's important to know that this is a much smaller scale than a bigger vision, you know, but again, it's an opportunity that has been presented to us, and to follow upon your support from the past couple of meetings. We're gonna be working closely, of course, with Councilor Harris, spreading the word. We've got a neighborhood meeting that we're putting together. So, you know, we're all working together in different capacities, so as we kind of monitor this, it will be pretty good for our direction going in the fall. Thank you so much.
Thank you both. So the motion can be made, and seconded, I just want to say thank you to you, as well to our state delegation, also to Commissioner Roy and the Baker administration for really working together with communities, local communities, as a great partner, which I know they commit to, and that they are fulfilling those promises as to working with our local communities. So thank you very much to the administration, to DCR, and to the work of you. So thank you.
Thank you, devil. We have a few people, PJ Foley, as you mentioned, too, Shaw, Paul Marine has done some great work on this, with Delhite, my office, Marty here at your mayor's office. Again, everybody, Councilor Harris, everybody really working together, along with the government and the administration. So fingers crossed that the long-range vision will come to be.
Good thing. All right, thank you very much. With that, Madam President, approval.
Counselor Keenan?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor LaFars?
Yes.
Counselor Palmuti?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Eight members.
Both. Next item on the agenda.
Next item is number three on the agenda, 2016-183.
Counselor Crowe?
We have the reading, please. Thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman. Just like you bring the body's attention to a spreadsheet that passed out at the beginning of this meeting, outlines categorized as year-end transfers. I'd like to thank the other four people, you know, pretty graphic timeframe to build up that spreadsheet, but she has the support, you know, and she can speak to it too. She's had in-depth conversations with the finance director, and the numbers are on point, like I said, basically, those folks are, your first show around through this? This is a traditional process to happen at this time in a year, so, I don't, and by the way, I know it's not our last meeting, but yet a moment, thanks Susan, I dealt with her, watched out throughout the last couple of months, and she faces, and she's an asset to the council, so thank you, Susan. We appreciate it, and if you have any more perspective, say, you cover, okay.
The motion?
Counselor Forrest?
Okay. Motion approved by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Harris. On the motion, Counselor Palmuti?
This is 2016-183.
Yes.
Can someone speak to the $65,000 fired department personnel services?
Yes, Counselor La... This is, this is, the result is, we projected out what the costs are between now and the fiscal year FFO, and in their personal service line, we're projecting out that they need another $65,000.
What is that for?
I believe that it was mostly made up of overtime costs.
So this should be the third time in county year that we've gone back to the well for overtime at the fire department, right? Didn't we do a transfer?
We did.
Oh, this is the amount that we were told was gonna happen the rest of the year? Like, two months ago?
I'll let you know what we did.
All right, some major representative. Through you, yes, Counselor Keenan?
We did do an early appropriation, as you know, within the fire department and other public safety departments like that.
I mean, she said it was an injury.
Overtime, overtime can be unpredictable. And I believe this is the case of that happening, that it was a certain amount projected up, a certain amount added to it, but again, it looks like the projections are gonna be just a touch under where they need to be, thus to be requested this transfer from the existing line.
Okay, $65,000, I didn't know anything asked, seems like a lot of money for the last couple of weeks compared to, to see how much we, how much we authorize. And I'm gonna support this, because, you know, there's really a lot of...
Back in April, there was an appropriate, a council order for $363,000. Let me just see if all of it was for the overtime, I believe it was.
It was. My recollection is it was.
Yeah, I believe that it was for all for overtime. They only have $6,000 left in that particular line. There could be some other lines that make up that $65,000 as well. This was done through a projection, where we go line by line, and we'll get if any lines are short, we have to cover those deficits before the end of the fiscal year. And even though there are only a few days left in the fiscal year, the overtime costs are usually a week or two delayed, so...
Right, so county.
That's a way to carry over, but we will lose the fiscal year 16.
What was the date of that? A 38th of February.
I believe it was in April, the beginning of April.
About two months ago. The total budget, if I recall, it was, that was like a third, right? The $300,000 additional expense beyond the budget, it was something like 20%, 25%. I remember it was a high, or recall correctly, it was a high amount. I remember asking the chief about that. And I think his response was, there were a couple of guys who were injured, which made the numbers skew up beyond what they predicted.
The original budget was $1.525.
So $300,000, a 30% breakage in the account, and then even two months later, there's another $65,000. I presume, Mr. Walker, with the financial person hasn't started yet in the fire department?
July 1st, Counselor.
July 1st. Well, I believe the point means, and that's why we support in that position, is so that we can get clearer numbers on the overtime and better forecasting from the fire department, you know, as she said, what he's working with now, his limited resources in terms of the financial activity that he's working. So I'll support it, and just surprised by, the Medicare FICA assessment, Mr. Walker, $100,000, what is that?
I cannot speak to that one if Mr. Kavanaugh is here, as he can.
Counselor Forrest, should you have a question for Mr. Penn?
He can have his own question, so Walker can stick back.
Okay, so you want to ask him?
Did you get a question to ask us?
I did, Counselor.
Can you answer it?
I underestimated the expense for the city this year would be the shortest answer.
Okay.
It's a projection.
Okay, that's all, sorry to interrupt all the way up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? All right. Very well, the motion made, seconded, Madam President, on the low, call the roll.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor LaFars?
Yes.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor LaFars?
Yes.
Counselor Palmuti?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Eight members. Next item on the agenda is number four, 2016-184, upon the request of the Director of Inspection Services.
Motion, we have the reading, Counselor Crowe.
Similar fashion, you can find the breakout on the spreadsheet, and also in the packet this evening, which will give any more detail associated with it, so.
Okay, so motion approved?
Correct.
Made by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Harris. On the motion? See, no one, Madam President, can call it.
Counselor Keenan?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Barnes?
Yes.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Palmuti?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Eight members.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Next item.
Next item on the agenda is 2016-185, appropriation for $600,000 to public boards, personal services.
We have the reading. Counselor Crowe?
All right, motion approved, made by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor, anybody?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Palmuti. On the motion? Anyone wishing to speak? Okay, very well, Madam President, it was possible.
Counselor Keenan?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Barnes?
Yes.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor LaFars?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Eight members. Next item is number six, 2016-186, an appropriation for $37,004.
We have the reading, please.
Okay, motion, we have the reading, and to approve by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor, are you?
Yes.
Seconded, okay, by Counselor Palmuti. And on the motion, anyone wishing to speak? Very well, Madam President, call it.
Counselor Keenan?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Barnes?
Yes.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor LaFars?
Yes.
Counselor Palmuti?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you.
Next item is number seven, 2016-187, appropriation for $38,000.
We have the reading, please.
Okay, motion approved, by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor LaFars. On the motion? Very well, Madam President.
Counselor Keenan?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor LaFars?
Yes.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor LaFars?
Yes.
Counselor Palmuti?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Eight members. Next item is number eight, on the agenda, 2016-188, appropriation for $40,000.
We have the reading, please.
Motion, we have the reading, and approved by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Palmuti. On the motion? All right, Madam President, call it.
Counselor Keenan?
Yes.
Counselor Crowe?
Yes.
Counselor Barnes?
Yes.
Counselor Finn?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor LaFars?
Yes.
Counselor Palmuti?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Seven members.
Thank you, Madam President. Next item.
Next item is number nine on the agenda, and it is 2016-189, appropriation for $200,000 to Discover.
We have the reading, please.
Motion, approved by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Palmuti. On the motion? Yes, Counselor Finn?
Same amount, through you, Madam President, the directors, same amount as last year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Palmuti?
As anyone who's ever had a conversation with Counselor Forrest, knows this is plenty of good news, and that, between Discover Quincy and the chamber, they do a lot of good work, very important, because it's an easy vote to transfer them over to them, you know, and thank them for the work that they do with Discover Quincy and the chamber.
Very well, thank you. I do want to recognize Janet Batson from the, from the chamber here this evening. Janet, will you just very quickly make your way in? Yeah, just a minute. I just wanted to come on.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Janet Batson, and I'm the president of Discover Quincy, the Quick Discover Quincy Board of Directors. Thank you for this opportunity to update you regarding Discover Quincy, a nonprofit destination marketing organization in Quincy, Quincy. In 2015, visitors came from all 50 states, 38 foreign countries, and last year, the Adescript and Josiah Quincy House reported 10 and 20% increase in their visitations. In addition to the $200,000 to the appropriation, Discover Quincy received over $100,000 in grants, $25,000 in income, also $25,000 in donations. The Greater Boston Convention of Business Bureau, the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism, provided us with another $75,000. This funding was used to launch our new website, and in particular, to develop a customized events calendar to be used as a resource for all of our community units. We have worked to create marketing collateral for many of our partner organizations, Adescript, Luton Adventure, Corey Museum, Quincy Corey Museum, Dorothy Quincy Homes, Hancock Cemetery, John Adams Health Block, amongst many more, Watson Cemetery and Tours, Quincy Cycles, Quincy Farmers Market, Quincy Historical Society, and Quincy Garden Football. These partner organizations rely on volunteers and have minimal funding, so we offered to utilize some of our marketing funds from grants to these organizations. We produce our own walk, providing expo brochures, including our downtown walking tour, translated into Chinese. I provide copies to you of some of these that are still in draft form. One of our biggest marketing successes we've had is our visitor's guide. We distributed over seventy-five copies to the guide in hundreds of locations in the Greater Boston area, with a strong push in the North Shore during October and in Plymouth during November. It could also be viewed on our website, we nail these also around the country, people interested in visiting us, and often people considering relocating to this area. If you utilize public transportation, you may have seen our advertising campaign for June and July, with MBTA, Redline, and buses, originating, which originated from the Quincy Center Station. With public transportation providing direct access to our community, we want to encourage Boston visitors to add Quincy to their places to visit. Discover Quincy recognizes program drives, visitation in Quincy, but it's been a challenge to find out what's happening and when, particularly when planning in advance. So Discover Quincy, this project received twenty-one thousand dollars each for the fiscal year two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, in the Mass Cultural Council Adams Arts Program, to support our Fifty Days of Freedom event series and its promotion. We are partnered with fifty-four organizations and programmed over one hundred and fifty-one events, in which a hundred and thirteen were free, and efforts to showcase the Quincy area arts, community cultural, education, and recreational assets that we have here in Quincy. I've posted a copy of that as well on your packets. We have extended a lot of effort to create arts and cultural programs for our community. Last summer, Discover Quincy utilized a vacant retail space in Quincy Center, and operated pop-up art galleries, live music, and from sixty-six Friday nights, supporting over seventy artists, local artists actually, from students to seniors. We had over twenty-five hundred visitors from sixty-six Massachusetts communities and seventeen states. For two thousand sixteen, we're re-formulating this to an artwork series, bringing pop-up art galleries, live music, performances, and free museum additions to each of the business districts in the city. I've closed the last two event schedules, and we are in the process of finalizing the next one in the North Quincy area on July eighth, that one will be focusing on cuisine and culture. New to this year, we also received seventy-five hundred dollars from State of Harbor, State of Bay, and Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation, to increase programming along Wall Street Beach. Our Wall Street Beach Wednesdays have been an instant success. Each week, we have children's entertainment at ten a.m. and live music from six to eight p.m., with our own life-size lawn games on the beach all day. We'll also host a finale on the Fifty Days of Freedom on Wall Street Beach on Saturday at eleven-thirty. In December two thousand fifteen, Discover Quincy operated an artisan shop for twelve days and made in Quincy Center, Center retail space, selling the work floor sixty, um, plus arts, local artisans, and generating thirteen thousand dollars in sales for our creative economy. We are currently looking for space to replicate this in December two thousand sixteen, and will expand our hours to open daily. Discover Quincy has also been busy networking with other Massachusetts communities. We have participated in many events hosted by the Greater Boston Convention of Visitors Bureau and the Mass Office of Travel and Tourism. One of the best relationships we've developed is with a team from Plymouth. We only have a small marketing budget, but we were still able to partner with Plymouth's Cooperative Marketing Strategy, spending ten thousand dollars and getting coverage in a dozen targeted publications, including the AAA Tour Books, American Box Association Motor Coach Directory, Kmart Gateway Guide, and the Naked Magazine's Best of New England Edition. While we're far from traveling abroad and expanding funds and international marketing campaigns, we did have visitors from various foreign countries. So, our friends in Plymouth heavily invested in international marketing campaigns, and for eight hundred dollars, they let us highlight our community and their printed marketing materials for their campaigns, giving Quincy exposure to the Asian travel markets. We also worked with Rafael Torres, a Quincy resident, and owner of Don Quixote, Don Quixote, Don Quixote, sorry, Torres, from Quincy and Spain. In two thousand thirteen, Plymouth had two-point-three million visitors, those visitors spent five hundred and thirty-nine million dollars and are attributed to thirty-hundred and seven, three thousand seven hundred jobs in the tourism industry. In twenty-twenty, they increased seven million visitors, which means two-point-two billion visitors spending and nine thousand five hundred tourism industry jobs. Quincy is sandwiched between tourism powerhouses, Boston, Plymouth, and the IRS. We have an opportunity to capitalize the investment of our neighboring communities are making. To get to Plymouth, visitors need to drive through Quincy, so in twenty-twenty, Plymouth and Providence Town will garner worldwide attention as they commemorate four hundred years. Plymouth was right behind them in twenty-twenty-two, lost to twenty-twenty-three Quincy in twenty-twenty-five, Salem in twenty-twenty-six, and Boston in twenty-thirty. Mayor Koch hosted an inaugural speech this year on preparing Quincy to twenty-twenty-five, and Discover Quincy is working hard with the Mass Four Hundred Committee to ensure our attractions are ready for the increased visitation. We appreciate your investment and support of Discover Quincy, and are ready to partner with the stations. Thanks so much, so we really do appreciate the work and the mud living goodness.
Thank you very much, Janet, yes, Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam President, I just want to thank you especially and the Discover Quincy team for helping our efforts with the most recent Ford fest that we had in Wall Street, Wall Street Beach and Squawam. Uh, you guys covered our insurance, you covered our signage, you covered our marketing, you put us in materials, um, and it was a huge success, people are, we're still talking about it, so, thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation and showing us the return on investment for two hundred thousand dollars a year. That is a nominal amount that's going into, um, extreme amounts of marketing and letting the world know that we're here, and we want your presence here in order to help our country thrive.
We don't want this to be a stop while the way, we want to be in this place.
Exactly, thank you very much, Janet.
Thank you, Counselor King, Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President, um, thank you, Janet, for your presentation, thank you for all your hard work with Discover Quincy, Chamber, Quincy Chamber Commerce, as well as Michael LaFars, you guys do a fantastic job in the city, and, uh, piggybacking on everything. You know, just having Senator King in here, and Secretary of Defense Ayers on the ferry system, how important that would really be when that gets up and running correctly, that someone, you know, fly into Logan, take the ferry over, take another shuttle into downtown development, our, our new IP, thanks for talking on tonight, and have a nice, um, you know, trip, and also come to Quincy, see the adotations. Um, another thing that was also in here, I thank you for the packets, I opened it right up and I saw Quincy Cycles, you know, how important our bicycle infrastructure will be, and I just want to read this real quick, this, Quincy Cycles is a group of Quincy residents advocating for bicycle infrastructure on our city streets and promoting responsible bicycling avenues of transportation, recreation, and exercise in Quincy. This is so important in conjunction with the ferry service, in conjunction with what you guys do, to move this city forward in the right direction, I want to thank you for everything you've done, thank you so much, Madam.
Thank you. All right, so motion approved by Counselor Croll, seconded by Counselor Palmucci, on motion, Madam Clark.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Pro.
Yes.
Counselor Barnes.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars. Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Seven members.
Thank you, thanks very much, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is number ten, two thousand sixteen, one ninety, appropriation approved, and approval, motion approved, Counselor Croll, seconded by Counselor Harris, um, anyone wishing to speak?
Through you again.
Yes, Counselor Finn.
Through the others, same amount as last year.
Yes, it is, Counselor.
Thank you.
Very well, all right, on motion, Counselor Palmucci.
Uh, through you perhaps, to, uh, even the mayor's representative, Commissioner Ramadi. Will we see a return of the DPW Public Works Week celebration that honored the service of employees and encouraged women in engineering?
Uh, Commissioner Ramadi, did you want to address that?
You weren't just, right, Lee Henry? No. I didn't ask you on the budget, Henry, maybe now's the appropriate time, but, um, will we see a return of the, uh, Public Works Week, uh, celebration that you've hosted in years past, and we honor, um, the service of longtime public employees, and I know, in years past, you also encouraged, um, schoolchildren to explore engineering careers, especially, uh, women taking into that field, so, will we see a return of that, is that what's?
It's, as you know, it takes the cooperation of a lot of departments, work within the city, and, uh, without, um, so timing is important, and for the past couple of years, you were not able to put that together. Still remain hopeful to be able to do that.
I do, I think it's an important celebration, I would.
Let's bring that.
With little sway I have over you, or those who could have made this decision. I did call you, bro.
Just wait for the time you say something.
No, I mean, that was, it was a great program, I think I went every year because, um, it was great.
Free lunch, that's what.
Yeah, it was free lunch. Yes, it's really, but, no, but it's a great opportunity to, you know, I, I, as a board counselor, asked a lot of the DPW, the men and women, uh, who serve in the DPW, and I think it's, uh, it was always an excellent opportunity for me to go back, to be there and say thank you to a lot of the folks who worked there, because I know how hard they worked, when, when I get the requests, they're the ones who are the passion, you know. It's easy for me to, you know, pass on a request from a constituent to you, and, uh, from you to them, uh, but, you know, the other ones out there who worked, and, and it's just like, it's a, it was a great program, um, I'd hate to see it, uh, not continue, uh, moving forward, so, just wanted to take this opportunity to, to stress support for that, and, and, uh, the wish that I, this particular council would like to see that, uh, go forward in the years to come. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Counselor Palmucci, anyone else wishing to be heard, very well, Madam Clark, who's possible?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Pro.
Yes.
Counselor Barnes.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, two thousand sixteen, one ninety-one, appropriation for Mass General Law Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three.
Motion approved, read, Counselor Croll, motion approved, uh, by Counselor Croll, seconded by Counselor LaFars, anyone wishing to be heard, motion? All right, seeing no one, Madam Clark, who's possible?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Pro.
Yes.
Counselor Barnes.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members. Next item on the agenda is number twelve, two thousand sixteen, one ninety-two, appropriation for eight thousand dollars.
Motion to approve, by Counselor Croll, seconded by Counselor, very well, Madam Clark, who's possible?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Pro.
Yes.
Counselor Barnes.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members. Next item on the agenda is number thirteen, two thousand sixteen, one ninety-three, in order, it is deemed that the City Council hereby needs the following intersection in memory of Private Brett Cornell, the U.S. Army War Four, World War One, intersection at Southern Hydrate and South Street. The intersection of Southern Hydrate and Desmond Road was the original site of the plaque.
Motion approved, read, by Counselor Barnes. Counselor Barnes.
Uh, just to move to approve on this, um, this, this, um, dedication, it was, um, the monument actually during construction got taken down, but went rededicated, uh, this will be done promptly in September or October, uh, of this year, uh, just getting approval from the, uh, as well, as well as with Counselor Croll as co-sponsoring, it's in his board, um, for Private Brett, uh, Cornell, who served in the U.S. Army, uh, World War One, so, stronger, we need you to approve.
Okay, motion approved, made by Counselor Barnes, seconded by Counselor Croll, on motion? I'd just like to recognize Veterans Services Secretary, uh, George, George Nicholson, I speak on my, so, if you could just come to the podium just for a quick moment, because I do want to recognize, there is one gentleman who has been the champion really of reneaming some of these, uh, in memory of World War One veterans, and I would just like you to speak briefly on that, if you would, please, use that.
Brett Cornell was, uh...
Why, there's another coming up too, so.
Charter member, the American Legion Post Ninety-Five, we now know, uh, no longer exists, and, uh, this was the other gentleman, and I can't think of the name of the guy.
I know, because I couldn't tonight, so.
Exactly, that's, right, thanks, gentlemen. And I know that when we had it taken down, we spent a lot of time going down the road to see where we could relocate Mr. Croll's, uh, place, and we're actually going to get, put it back fairly close to where it had been before, so, we're happy about that. Now, if you wanted the, uh, as far as, uh, Colonel Frederick Jones, we would all have the same one, or?
I know we're coming to that, yeah, but you can talk about that if you're here.
That was, uh, again, that's, he was a father of the march on the Quincy Magin post, which never had an official name, so it's just been the Quincy Magin. And the site for that, we've got set, it's the corner of Hanan and Mechanic, uh, you've got the rerouted road, now you've got the park on both sides, and we're planning that the, uh, the post will be put back actually on the Magin building side, as you come down, you know, truck, it'll be to the, uh, second corner. And you have the signs of the posts all ready to go for both, so, we're all set with that.
Thank you, George, thank you, thank you very much, now, I know it's a dedicated group of people who've been talking about these World War One, um, rededications for quite some time now, so I'm glad we gave, uh, everyone a name. David's name, I wish I could.
You want to do the Trubiano?
Yeah, we'll get there, I can, I just want to, anyway, sorry, sorry to take it out of order, but it was, from my importance, and I just wanted to make sure we recognize the folks who were really championing these, um, so, motion made, seconded, on motion, Madam Clark.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Pro.
Yes.
Counselor Barnes.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel, President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Next item on the agenda.
It is deemed that the City Council hereby needs the following intersection in memory of the Trubiano Brothers, who served in World War Two, intersection at Lancaster Street and Fowler Street. The Trubiano.
Motion approved, read, by Counselor Barnes, Counselor Barnes, motion?
Thank you, Madam President, um, this one is the Trubiano Brothers, and I'd like to bring, uh, Mr. Nicholson up again, um, for this one, these were five brothers, they were in World War Two, they all survived and came home, and it's just a nice dedication for five brothers being in the service, and, and Mr. Nicholson can talk a little bit more about in depth with the.
Well, there you go.
Thank you.
When the Trubiano family, uh, brothers came home, there had been, back in World War Two, they had made a message of the legend, in our, citing them as the, uh, the single family with a large number of members who acted and served in World War Two, uh, we've since found that there have been several others. But, that being said, they got the recognition at the time, all five brothers are now deceased, uh, the last one just had me gone about two years ago, three were in the Army, two in the Marines, two were wounded, and they all came back, and the idea is when we did this, uh, as we had done with the Vietnam dedications, if we're going to put up a monument for our memorial sign post, what we've been trying to do is get as close to their individual neighborhoods, where they grew up, where the signs and memorials could be most meaningful. And since they grew up on Lancaster, the Elwinson, uh, Quincy High School, the corner of Lancaster and Fowler turned out to be the closest we could get to, to their, to their, uh, their homestead, and so that was why the site was selected. And Lou Trubiano, the president knows very well, has been advocating very strongly for the family, we started, we got the okay for this last year, in March, and I had no idea the election would have picked a reason that fell through the cracks. I mean, now that the slate is clear, we wanted to rewrite and get it done, and with another sign made up, and again, hopefully, we'll get the family together and write yourself inscriptions to that dedication as well.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor.
With the move to approval, I want to also thank the mayor, Mayor Coke, we do a phenomenal job with the veterans here in the city of Quincy, he's been open arms for any type of things happening, whether it be islands or anything, I want to say, I want to commit, and, you know, say he's doing a great job, all these years being the mayor, and this is at the top echelon of being involved with the veterans, uh, so with that, I have a motion to approve on this one.
Motion approved, made by Counselor Barnes, seconded by Counselor Croll, on motion? All right, Madam Clark, who's possible?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Pro.
Yes.
Counselor Barnes.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci. President Hughes.
Yes.
Seven members.
Next item.
Next item on the agenda is rededication of intersection at Han, Parkway, Mechanic Street, in memory of Colonel Frederick Jones, the U.S. Army, World War One.
I have the reading.
Okay, motion approved, read, uh, by Counselor Barnes, motion to approve.
Motion approved on this one, also, I want to also thank, um, former city clerk, Joe Shea, for all his due diligence on this as well, um, these three, um, dedications and rededications are very important to the city of Quincy, um, and with that said, um, you know, the old American Legion Post Ninety-Five was right there in that corner of where the Han, uh, Han Parkway is now, right now, that goes through there on Mechanic and River, so, always remember, if you were a citizen of Quincy for many years, you remember going past that now, Post Ninety-Five, so, it'll be right there, with that, motion to approve.
Motion approved, made by Counselor Barnes, seconded by Counselor Harris, on motion, Madam Clark?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Pro. Counselor Barnes.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFars.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci. President Hughes.
Yes.
Seven members.
Next item, Madam Clark.
Number sixteen on the agenda, two thousand sixteen, one ninety-six, it is deemed that the City of Quincy... It is a day that the city of Quincy accepts the following gifts and conditions, a tax area in Set Four, donor Robert Rosemary Joey Roy.
Okay, motion to waive the reading and...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel Woodburn. On the motion, Counsel Finn.
We also add to make certain that the counsel office sent the thank you to your wife.
Yes, Counsel Finn, thank you. So, motion to approve and send a letter of thanks made by Counsel Woodburn, and then given finally by, uh, Counsel Finn, seconded by Counsel King on the motion, call the call.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe. Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Can you record it as yes on two thousand sixteen, one ninety-five, two thousand sixteen, one ninety-four?
Yes.
Yes. Number seventeen, two thousand sixteen, one ninety-seven.
Motion to waive the reading, uh, accept the gift, and send a note of thanks by Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Pallochi on the motion.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe. Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members. Next item number eighteen, two thousand sixteen, one ninety-one, a gift for...
Motion to waive the reading by Counsel Woodburn, approved, seconded by Counsel Pallochi on the motion, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe. Counsel Woodburn. Counsel Finn. Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Seven members. Next item is number nineteen, which is two thousand sixteen, one ninety-nine, it is a day that the city of Quincy...
Motion to waive the reading by Counsel Woodburn, approved, and send a note of thanks by Counsel Woodburn, seconded by, anyone who wants to second it, Counsel Crowe. On the motion, anyone wishing to speak? Same, if you can call the roll, please.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
No.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is number twenty.
Have the reading.
Okay, motion to waive the reading, Counsel Pallochi.
This is rather lengthy resolution, states, uh, we create a lot of positions in the FY seventeen budget that were accompanied by ordinance, as I said about that. This is just a resolution asking the mayor before he appoints folks to those positions, and he creates an ordinance and subvention to this body, as you will improve them before they're built, but at least it's a, um, a sign of good faith, uh, between, uh, from the mayor's office as to, um, the long-term manner in which this body expressly prefers to see positions added, not to the budget, but by ordinance. So, I think this is, I, I think at all times we discussed that we wouldn't hold up new positions based on this, but, uh, I, I took it as the will of the body that we wanted to see ordinances for any of those. So, that's all this resolution asks, is that, um, the administration create job descriptions and ordinances matching those job descriptions, and submit them to the council prior to making those appointments. Obviously, they'll make the appointments, uh, in the usual common launch and agenda in the near future, but, um, so it's not like it holds up the appointment, but I think it's, uh, I think this is consistent with the will of the body that is expressed with the budget here, and that has my call, I mean, my call is to support this.
Motion approved by Counsel Pallochi, seconded by Counsel Woodburn. Anyone wishing to rehearse on motion? All right, seeing no one, uh, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe. Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yes. Thank you. Very well. All right, our next item is the approval of previous meeting minutes. The, uh, June sixth and June eighth.
Move.
Move approval of the June sixth, June eighth minutes. What's approved? Uh, made by Counsel Pallochi. Is there a question, Counsel King?
Yes.
June eighth.
Are you seconding?
No, I'm not here.
Okay.
We're talking June eighth minutes here for the final screening.
Sorry?
June eighth, final screening.
After the special committee, the special...
Special council meeting, that we had to include the budget.
Yes. Okay, I was here.
Oh, that's impressive.
Thank you.
Okay, very impressive. Okay. All right, so there was question, uh, so there's still motion on the floor, nobody seconded?
As amended.
As amended, seconded by Counsel Finn. On the motion, anyone? Okay, great. Uh, on the motion.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you. Communications and reports from the mayor, I wish we also, City Board's Madam Court.
We do have some, uh, communications this evening. House and Sullivan report on applying agreed law procedures over compliance applicable to Mass School District here and...
Okay, motion to waive the reading by Counsel Pallochi.
Also, uh, first sub quest outstanding debt as of six thirty fifteen placed on file, and a letter from Senator John Keenan in support of Senate Bill two-two-zero-seven, an act to prevent wage theft and promote employer accountability, placed on file with resolve two thousand fifteen, one-four-one.
All right, those, uh, communications will be placed on file. Thank you. Any unfinished business from proceeding? Seeing none. Uh, reports of committees, Counsel Luth Barnes.
I may use my fifteen minutes now. Okay, from the ordinance committee, we have some draft requests. In Ward one, Counsel order twenty sixteen dash one-six-three, I have pin cap parking at twenty feet of lane, unit number two, and a positive recommendation.
Okay, uh, positive recommendation, uh, made by Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Pallochi. All right, Counsel Crowe. Okay. Um, on the motion? Uh, Madam Court.
Do we need to call a roll on traffic measures?
I believe you do.
Yes, we do.
You do.
We can just call the number.
Hold on one second. Say that again?
We can just call the number, um...
Say what it is.
Rather than just say what it is, just the number, and we'll go down, and we'll call the roll on each.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
In Ward four, Counsel order twenty sixteen dash one-six-four, move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Harris, on the motion, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Okay, I have a slate of Ward four, twenty sixteen dash one-six-five, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation, Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Pallochi, um, on the motion, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Counsel order twenty sixteen dash one-six-six, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation, Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Pallochi, on the motion, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Counsel order twenty sixteen dash one-six-seven, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation, Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Pallochi, on the motion, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel...
Counsel order twenty sixteen dash one-six-eight, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation, Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Pallochi, on the motion, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Eight members.
Counsel order twenty sixteen dash one-six-nine, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Pallochi, on the motion, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel order twenty sixteen dash one-seven-zero, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation, Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Pallochi, on the motion, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe. Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel order twenty sixteen dash one-seven-one, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation, Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Pallochi, on the motion, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel order twenty sixteen dash one-seven-two, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Pallochi, on the motion, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel order twenty sixteen dash one-seven-three, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Pallochi, on the motion, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Woodburn.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Luth Barnes.
Yes.
Counsel Pallochi.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel order twenty sixteen dash one-seven-four, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Counsel Woodburn, seconded by Counsel Pallochi, on the motion, Madam Court.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe. Council Pro.
Yes.
Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Finn. Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Fars.
Yes.
Council Calmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor 2016-175, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Council Forrest, seconded by Council Calmucci on motion.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Pro.
Yes.
Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Fars.
Yes.
Council Calmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor 2016-176, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Council Forrest, seconded by Council Calmucci on motion.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Pro.
Yes.
Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Fars.
Yes.
Council Calmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor 2016-177, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Council Forrest, seconded by Council Calmucci on motion.
What order I just... I don't see 177 reflected in the calendar.
That is to, uh, do not enter on Redden Street Westbound intersecting with Common Street, Monday through Friday, seven a.m. All right, the work of the committees will correct that. What do you... It has been under tags, it has been...
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Finn. Uh, on motion.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Pro. Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Fars.
Yes.
Council Calmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Councilor 2016-178, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Council Forrest, seconded by Council Calmucci on motion.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Pro. Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Fars. Council Calmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Our final word for traffic, Councilor 2016-179, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Council Forrest, seconded by Council Harris on motion.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Pro.
Yes.
Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Fars.
Yes.
Council Calmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
And our last traffic award since Councilor 2016-180, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Council Forrest, seconded by Council Harris on motion.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Pro.
Yes.
Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Fars.
Yes.
Council Calmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Okay, also in the ordinance committee, we have Councilor 2016-157, this is the ordinance, ordinance permitting section 6.04, dogs leash. Dogs leash show strength, allow off-leash areas who designated by the, um, park recreation board. We held a hearing on this, uh, suite, I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Council Forrest, seconded by Council Harris on motion. All right, um, Madam Court, if you could call the role, please.
Yes. Council King.
Yes.
Council Pro.
Yes.
Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Fars.
Yes.
Council Calmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Speaker.
I want to place on file. Okay, um, in ordinance committee, Councilor 2016-66, it's the original, um, proposed language of the off-leash ordinance that, uh, that had been placed on file.
Excuse me, what was that one?
So this is Councilor 2016-66, we originally were looking at like which to have off-leash off the areas. This was the, it had a lot more language, but we kind of dumped down the simplified, so that's just a matter of placing that on file. All right, that matter of the place on file. For any last, uh, the topic we've had three meetings on, including one earlier this evening, Councilor 2016-133, this is the urban revitalization and development plan amendment number four. We did have a demand for earlier this evening. I do want to, just at this time, um, know Council Yang, he's asked us this evening, to submit communication, which I wrote into the record during the committee meeting, uh, her support of the proposed ordinance. I move positive recommendation. Positive recommendation by Council Forrest, seconded by Council Harris on motion. All right, very well, um, Madam Court, if you could call.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Pro.
Yes.
Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Fars, yes. Council Calmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Speaker.
Thank you. That's it. Yes, Council.
I believe I requested in the calendar 2016-78, that that had to be placed on file.
Yes. Yes, Council, we're just trying to figure that out. Thank you very much. So, Council, uh, Council Order 2016-078, um, will be placed on file. Thank you. Uh, for the reports of committees. Recognize Council Pro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, at this point, I would like to, excuse me, revisit the discussion on Council Order 2016-134, which is the appropriation of the extended warrants for repurposing. Um, when we did convene from the last meeting, there was a motion on the floor by Council Harris, and I believe Council Finn had the floor, so.
About to receive the floor. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, again, I, the first question I just had is, do we going to get it out or come back? Have you broken up the costs associated with these various, uh, things, your proposing for some gymnasium or any of that yet? Something broken up?
I believe the, uh, the E N X roof and the A C system is $500,000. Bleaches, I believe, $225,000. Um, his additional work, the lighting, I'm not sure if Gary has numbers of the lighting in the gym. Also, the P A system needs to be repaired, it doesn't work, which is a public safety issue. And some other work, uh, we're talking about in the hallway area, so, um, Gary, you want to?
That's, again, I... I trust that, I mean, if you want to send us stuff, they have it. I just want to get a sense of general rate of the relationship. I, I can, now, firsthand, the bleachers are problematic with that contact, I could put them in the wrong hazardous, quite honestly, in some ways. But I know that many people have been asking about it, so I certainly can support that. Thanks to you, Madam President, to the auditor, I just wanted to make certain, have you, you've had a chance to review these various funds?
Yes, I have, Council.
And that, uh, the capacity exists within those.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Press.
Thank you, Council Finn. Anyone else who should be heard? All right, is there a motion to?
Council Harris.
All right, so, Council Harris, you made a motion to approve, seconded by Council Vaughn. Anyone else who should speak? Very well, if you call, roll, Madam.
Council?
No.
Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Fars.
Yes.
Council Calmucci.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
President.
The next item from the preceding hearing earlier this evening is, uh, Council Order 2016-155, which is an appropriation of $1 million for the Quincy Center district improvement program, and, um, I'm not sure if you guys...
All right, Mr. Stevens, if you're playing part of this here, voting to speak on this. Hello.
Good evening, Chairman, uh, to the councilors. Uh, I'm here to speak to the $1 million DIF request, and, uh, it is directly tied to the urban renewal amendment four. Uh, and we've proposed some bridge financing, uh, to get us, uh, through the, the next several months, uh, into the fall where we could, uh, be back before this council. Uh, we hope with a redevelopment program, uh, the new public parking garage designs, and additional, uh, DIF financing requests. Uh, part of the urban renewal amendment number four, uh, uh, public hearing, and based with this council, uh, we included a, uh, R K G report that discussed the DIF financing model, uh, in that there's enough, uh, revenue today, uh, to cover the existing $40 million in DIF financing, and, uh, that, uh, an additional $1 million, you know, will still be covered with the existing, uh, tax revenue today. Uh, we did submit a, a budget, a, a breakdown for the million dollars. Uh, it's targeted for, uh, uh, the redevelopment of the Hancock lot appropriate. Uh, specifically, uh, the, uh, schematic design of that garage, uh, would, would be budgeted with this financing. And we've identified two, uh, uh, public improvement projects, uh, that need to be started in order to make way for new development. Uh, those include a sewer line, uh, that goes from Cottage Ave, that bisects the lot, uh, connects to Revere Road. Uh, we're going to need to relocate that in order to site, uh, the public parking garage. And, uh, the third item is, uh, the decommissioning of the old town road alignment, uh, that is currently, uh, by, uh, second the Hancock lot as well. Uh, that's still in place, as a lot of you know, was relocated or redirected to main flows, uh, but that old alignment is still there. Uh, we envisioned, uh, that it, that would form a new, uh, stormwater drain line, uh, in that general vicinity, but there is some engineering work that needs to get done on both of those, uh, projects, as well as, again, underway with the parking garage design. Uh, we also included appraisal services, uh, as a budget line item, uh, that we move, uh, moving forward with the mayor's commission and, uh, potentially, I mean, the domain appraisals of property. Uh, and, uh, we did cover, uh, or identify $75,000 of consultant services. Uh, we believe those are for, uh, uh, engineering, financial, uh, legal consultants working with us, uh, on the redevelopment of the Hancock lot progress. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Council Finn.
Just, again, I appreciate the presentation of what the, and the expenses are, and I always have to look at these bond authorizations. I always get a little nervous when I say the mayor is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. And one of the things I think has been a bad policy, uh, in the past, I think we saw it reflected in this year's budget, when we find ourselves with, for lack of a better, uh, term for our most institutional deficit that's been built in, in some ways. I, there are no plans either to hire any city employees off of these bond resources?
No, not these bond resources.
Not these bond resources?
Not, not this $1 million.
We know what exists currently, is there any intention to use bond resources to add additional employees to the city?
No, not at this time.
You see, this didn't, no, not at this time is the part that concerns me, is there a way we can amend this to suggest that these resources not be utilized without such a permit?
What do you draw for Kansas?
Thank you.
If there may, Council, uh, be entered. Rob is hanging out at this time. Uh, it's been the mayor's indication, we may, if there will not be a utilization of those funds, hire any additional staff in the future for this matter. Uh, the ones that exist, currently exist, there will be no additional. Uh, I looked very hard at that budget, as I said before you, and I took anybody, uh, I took the last person I thought was somewhat in a, um, not a full-time position, totally dedicated to the downtown office or to the department budget, I took the mayor to discuss it with me, and, uh, so I, I will say there is no intention to add many employees, um, off of the DIF budget, uh, that will be city employees that will be unused in the future. Uh, again, if there's a consultant cost, uh, Mr. Stevens mentioned Lado, um, if you recall, there was a period of time when, uh, we brought in, uh, Free City, which was a construction, uh, a pre, not a appraisal, actually, they, they were cost estimator, we brought them on, something like that might be anticipated, but no longer.
Yeah, I, I, again, I don't have any difficulty, obviously, with project or without using professional consultants and various companies to make that happen, I'm not too worried about that. I, again, I'm going to take you on your word, I would ask, uh, uh, who, Madam President, to the auditor, that we do monitor these expenditures, and that, um, if you could make us aware as these bonds become active in terms of various expenditures, I, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Calmucci.
Thank you, Bob. Rob, which parcels does the, do the, uh, the public improvements benefit?
Uh, can you be more specific?
Are there public improvements?
For the Hancock lot?
Okay, so that's the parcel that it would benefit would be for the Hancock lot?
For the new sewer line? I'm sorry.
Requesting $1 million, right? A portion of that $1 million is being utilized to, uh, for infrastructure and public improvement, correct?
Right.
Okay, so my question, all of a sudden, so my question is, what parcels are those public improvements that a portion of the $1 million is going to be used for?
Correct, that would be the Hancock lot.
Okay. And that, uh, we're doing that without first knowing what is going to be built on the Hancock lot, or are we doing that assuming that the O'Connell proposal is what will be built on that lot?
We're doing that on, uh, identified constraints to the lot, that, you know, there's a sewer line there, uh, today, that needs to get relocated. It depended, it doesn't matter who's, who's coming next.
So it's not project-specific, it doesn't matter?
It's not project-specific, but I would point out that this million dollars is just a bridge, you have to start the engineering design to get to a final cost. That final cost down the road would be subject to an additional, you know, DIF financing, uh, unless, of course, you know, the city can identify, you know, additional state of federal financing. Um, that will support new development, no matter who it is.
Sure, but it's not, it's not taking any specific developments. I mean, I, when I'm thinking sewer line, I'm thinking it has to meet the qualifications necessary for a certain number of units, or for a certain type of property to be built. It's only, this work doesn't, isn't specific to any type of project, it doesn't matter. The work that's being contemplated would be equally, is applicable for commercial, for a 15-story luxury high-rise, for townhouses, it doesn't matter.
Correct, yeah, the, the issue again is, is back when the city, uh, took, uh, the old wooden houses on the Hancock lot, I am in domain, uh, it, it was a cottage street that, that connected Cottage Ave and, and Revere Road. The, because it was only a surface lot, that sewer was left in place. Uh, we are now contemplating a new public parking garage in that location with the sewer lines. We are exploring the opportunity to go underground, at least on one level, parking. In order for us to do that, this sewer line needs to get relocated into a, a different location that won't be impacted by the new garage.
Okay, so it's only, so the sewer line is only going to service the, uh, anticipated city path of the Hancock lot?
The sewer line is, is currently in place now, uh, servicing a number of...
No, no, I'm talking, you can have a move-in.
We got to relocate it, we can't discontinue it, it'll be relocated to continue to provide service for what's there today, plus what's coming in the future.
All right. What's coming in the future for you, though?
Well, if, on the, uh, back to the, tied to the urban renewal plan, we've identified four redevelopment locations, uh, R1, R2, R3, uh, as well as H1, uh, and there's a garage, uh, those are...
What's the H1? I know R1 and R2.
That, that could be that the 1500 Hancock lot, uh, that...
Okay.
Some type of boutique hotel.
Okay. That's the only, uh, that's the only work being contemplated under this $1 million for infrastructure work?
Uh, no, uh, there is a decommissioning of the old town road alignment, uh, that runs, uh, behind most of the buildings. Uh, it actually runs underneath 1500 Hancock, uh, it runs behind the buildings in the lot.
Tell me what decommissioning is.
Uh, decommissioning, right now, there is a, uh, large culvert, uh, brick block, corrugated steel, uh, that is running underneath, uh, the Hancock lot.
And it's not in use because of the town?
There are flows, there are flows still in that part, yes. It's from the, the local drainage system. So we need to build a new drainage system, uh, for the whole Hancock lot area, as well as the Ross Garage area, but none of this money is identified for the Ross Garage site area.
Okay. And then, um, thank you, Rob, Christian. Uh, Mr. Fancies, uh, you were talking about the salaries. The $75,000, that's administrative, that is what, apportionment of salaries?
No, no salaries, just, uh, uh, consultants that, uh, reengage for the downtown.
Okay. And are we fully, um... Fully probably not the right word. Are we add, do we have the folks who are on the city payroll over to the DIF yet? The folks who do downtown work?
There are still two salaries on the DIF, and that would be the, uh, the special contractor to manage on the downtown.
But that, I'm sorry, finish.
And also, Mr. Tramitose, who is the, uh, the engineer for the downtown.
Oh, excellent. I guess I, I'd ask the question in reverse, city to DIF, run the DIF to city. So, uh, are there plans to put either of those positions on? Do you, I don't, I don't know if you know the best thinking on this, but are there, are there any discussions or plans to put those onto the city payroll rather than the DIF?
There were, there were, the mayor's discussed, we, 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 we had a conversation about that.
Okay. I mean, obviously, I mean, things have been raised before. The, the DIF is borrowing money, you know, to have someone on salary, you know, as Gary's not going anywhere, it's not like, you know, it's not like he's not going to play a continued role in this.
Let's not give him too much stress.
Yeah, right, right. But, uh, I, you know, I would prefer to see them on the city, on the city payroll. So I, maybe it's an accounting kind of approach, but, uh, I'd rather use city money than borrow money that we have to pay interest on, because it just doesn't fiscally prove it to me, but, uh, I don't, I certainly think that the job that those two folks are doing, Mr. Tramitose and Gary, are important to the downtown and, uh, necessary to, to us proceeding, uh, with the downtown redevelopment. I'm not suggesting that their positions and salaries should go away, just the way we treat, kind of, you know, using normal revenue rather than borrowing. Um, okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Press. I do have one other question for, I don't know if it's best for, Mr. Walker or Mr. Kavanaugh. I was curious as to whether or not this bonded money would be calculated into our debt-to-budget ratio, or our total debt to equalized valuation. I guess I'll throw that out to anyone, so who can answer that?
Mr. Kavanaugh? Mr. Kavanaugh, if you can forward. Oh, did you?
Oh, hello to him, Mr. Walker. Thanks a lot if you had a...
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Yes, Councilor, would be counted.
Okay, and so, it is, well, it has been counted, yeah, because we have authorized it, right?
Uh, everything projected to be spent add to, that is counted in the debt ratio of the city.
Why? When was it?
It's been added all along, it's on the latest debt schedule, but you received it on June 6th.
Okay, so, because I'm going back to, obviously, this goes back to our June 13th conversations, where you said the magic numbers that we should say, you know, six percent debt to budget ratio and 2.5% total debt to equalize valuation. So at that point, it's already being assumed that the $1 million?
Excuse me. It wasn't at the time that that debt schedule was produced, it will be going forward if approved.
Okay, so that's why I'm asking, so you said.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Alright, so where does that put us? Does this $1 million change those numbers at all? I mean, it changes something, does it change it in any significant way that it would change the debt to budget ratio percentage or the debt to equalize, equalize evaluation percentage?
No, it would be completely insignificant. 2017, there'd be no interest paid on that because it's a ban, no interest would be paid until 2018. Our ratio would be lower than.
I'm sorry, say the last part again.
Our ratio would be lower than it is now in 2018.
That's assuming we don't borrow anything, though, between?
No, that, well, that's what the borrowing that we've assumed is being built in.
Yeah, but when we talked to Cindy, she said that, the last time she was up, she said that she wasn't made aware of any of the potential borrowing. I think Councilor Bonner or somebody from that side of the well had asked, what about the CIP that's forthcoming? Because when she was here before May 2nd, when the mayor had presented the CIP, so she said, I, you know, I've heard numbers across the house, and I don't paraphrase, but I don't know any specifics. So now we have specifics from the CIP, we have a specific request for the, for the downtown authorization. So were you telling me that she had calculated those, that bonding in when she presented the most recent update?
She didn't have specific numbers, we hadn't made a specific proposal at that point in time to the council, that was more recent. We had modeled out, what if it's this, what if it's that, different, different models. All of the models fit within the debt ratio. When we had our bond rating discussions with both Moody's and Standard and Poor's, we projected out some possible announcement CIP as well as the DIF extension. All of those models and all of those projections fit within the ratios. So without specifics, she was able to say we're still on safe ground.
Okay, so that sounds reasonable. And the million dollars in this DIF borrowing was captured in those conversations with the ratings agencies and with Cindy?
Correct.
Alright, thank you, I have another question.
Thank you, councillor.
Actually, I have another question, if I could, to Mr. Timmons, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Timmons. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening.
I want to ask you, Councilor Finn had raised, just a couple of minutes ago, I guess I'd quantify it as a concern about the very broad language that we typically use in every bond request. And I had talked to you about it last, last council meeting last week, asking if we can change the number. And I just want to just walk through very briefly what, what this body's, what's within our power to do, what's within our purview to do in terms of the bond authorization. Now, you told me that we cannot change the number, correct? We can make it lower, but we cannot make it higher because that would be considered us spending money, right?
That's correct.
Right? Now, there's, the bond authorization request, I don't have a copy of this in front of me, so I apologize if I get the wording wrong. It essentially says it's for downtown redevelopment, then there's that, that very broad language at the end that says, in any other action deemed necessary by the mayor. We could change that without, without impacting the spending portion of the bond, correct?
Well, I don't agree with that because really your role is to manage the finances of the city. And normally, by the time one of these bond orders comes before you, it's been at least reviewed, if not drafted by bond counselor. They generally don't go through my office. It's a municipal finance transaction. It occurs after, you know, calls that I have sat in on on occasion, but that language is something that's generally drafted outside. But beyond that, even if it were not the case, your role is to address the finances of the matter, not necessarily the language of it.
Yeah, but we're voting on the language, right?
Well, you're voting the entire bond authorization, right? And if you think that due to the vague language, that somehow not all the money is warranted, then that's your remedy is to address the money aspect of it. But the language is crafted for a reason, and they come before you for the money at this juncture. Especially a project of this magnitude, you're not always certain what you're going to encounter. And the intention of that language is to allow for projects of this nature or of any nature for which you're bonding to move forward without the types of hiccups that concur in the public sector, where your financing capabilities are very limited and constrained.
Sure, I understand that. But I suppose that the crux of the matter is that broad language suggests, it could be arguably interpreted to suggest that the mayor can't execute any part of the URDP with the million dollars. So we've been provided with a breakout, and a more planned devil's advocate, but we've been provided with a breakout of what the million dollars would be used for, right? You've seen that?
Um, yes, I've seen it. I haven't looked at it from where I look at some.
Sure, no, I have, you've seen it, though, so it's off the top of my head, seventy-five thousand dollars for administrative, administrative costs, right? That's the only one I can remember. So the mayor, arguably any mayor, could then not spend the seventy-five thousand dollars on administrative fees. They could, they could spend it on anything else that's covered in the URDP because it says, the language says in furtherance of the URDP, right?
Well, in furtherance of the particular project that's been put before you, right.
But that language isn't, the particular project is everything in the downtown. The bond authorization language isn't specific to what that million dollars will be spent on here, 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 you know. Hundred thousand here, two hundred thousand here. It's a million dollars for the purpose of, and anything else, you know, any other action necessary to carry out the URDP.
Counselor, I just want to say that you're coming up against two minutes till fifteen minutes, and then come back. I know there's a couple of other questions, I just wanted to let you know, that's all.
That's fine, I'll yield to Councilor Finn.
You don't have to, you finish.
No, that's fine, I mean, I, listen, I'm not going to vote on anything until I get questions answered, so whether it's fifteen minutes and then five minutes again, that's fine. But, you know, I appreciate that the council rules, and I don't want to have to use, the only council rule that applies to an individual councilor exerting his, his power in one little each wheel. The council to block something from passing, but I'm going to have questions answered. If I'm not, I'll simply object to the matter and we'll put it on for another night to vote on. But I'll, I'll stop asking questions and allow another council an opportunity.
Okay.
I would be, again, I just have one bridge comment, I don't know if it would be that long, so I'd be happy to yield one of my time to.
Do you want to ask a question?
He's yielding, he's wanting.
No, again, I think you're on track of my own issues, I still have yields on that time, too.
Yes, come on back.
Can you answer that question?
We're back.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, explain, John.
You have fifteen minutes, so go ahead.
Can you answer the question I asked?
Uh, no, you'll have to refresh my memory.
I was hoping you didn't. Essentially, the language is so broad, right, you know, I don't know, if someone, if someone has a copy of the bond authorization, anybody could send it this way. The language is so broad that it essentially says, America's spending this $1 million to take any action necessary to implement the URDP. There's a lot of things in the URDP that aren't being discussed, thank you very much, Jim, that aren't being discussed in this particular request for money as we've represented. But as we both know, what we're voting on is this, not the, the backup that Mr. Fancies gave us where he said, you know, here are the multitude of things that this $1 million is going to be spent on. So if I vote on this, I have no, in support of this, I have no recourse if something gets spent differently, and I'm not talking pennies or nickels, but arguably, the $1 million gets spent on something completely different, right? I mean, there's no, there's no recourse.
There's recourse. There's an oversight committee here, you can request an update from the mayor on the project and the expenditures as we go forward. You know, I know there was a very, what I consider at least, to have been a very, very regrettable discussion at the meeting a week ago, where an issue of trust was brought up with the administration and members of the administration. The fact of the matter is, in a plan A form of government, the mayor executes, he's putting before you a proposal here. And yes, the language is broad, but it's not intended to do a twenty-two switcheroo. It's intended to give him the ability, to give others the ability to move forward. And I would say that you absolutely have remedies, a number of them, if you think that somehow things aren't going forward the manner that you understood it. But the fact of the matter is, that's very standard language, and it's used in all sorts of bond authorizations because bonded projects tend to be big projects, and anticipating all the costs and eventualities that might occur moving forward, very difficult at this time, this stage, a bond authorization. So that's really what it's more about. But I would encourage you, if you had questions, to just very simply request an update, and then make sure you put it on the agenda in the fall about how does this money being spent? Have we dipped into that contingency language somehow, and have the mayor report to you?
Do you understand what my, what my concern is? I mean, just, and again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm kind of playing devil's, devil's advocate here, but I, but I, there is something about the bond language, it's very broad, especially when we're talking about, and this is a million dollars, okay, so in the grand scheme of the downtown redevelopment, a million dollars is not anywhere near what's going to be spent. It's, you know, one, one-hundredth of what's going to be spent. But I think it's important to have this conversation so that we all fully understand. You know, I'm not going to say for the, for the new counselors, I think it's important for the old counselors to understand where the line is here and what we can and can't do with bond authorizations. And so, the bond authorization here, this 2016-155, is that city, Quincy City Council, being ordained as Quincy City Council with $1 million appropriate to finance all costs needed to carry out the Quincy Center District Improvement Program within the Quincy Center Development District, including all costs incidental related to, and then it goes on essentially to say, or not essentially, specifically, the payment of project costs and any other action necessary to carry out this project. We're voting on a million dollars, which I don't have a problem with, and I'm going to support it regardless, but we're voting on a million dollars of a hundred and twenty, thirty million dollar plan. Arguably, the mayor could spend this million dollars on any piece of this plan, right? There's nothing that would limit him.
Well, I, I do think there are limits because the presentation that's been made to you is that things have been done in stages, and those stages have been laid out to you. And so, I don't think it's as broad sweeping as you say, although I understand that that language may seem it. But the language doesn't stand there alone, it's in a particular context, and it includes the presentations that have been made. The fact that you've been told we're going in this direction, we need the million dollars to go in this direction. And there is broad language that says you can go this way, basically, I acknowledge what you're saying. However, if there is that type of move, A, it's a deviation from a project that the mayor's saying this is the course we should be on, and B, it's something that you do have rights to review. You may not perhaps feel you have adequate rights right now to step in and deal with it, but you absolutely have rights to review. Stage is on the way, too. Are we still going down this path, or what's going on? You can, you can review that, but the flexibility in the bonding is intended. Another component of this is, is the purchases of the bonds.
No, I have no problem with that flexibility whatsoever, that the mayor needs to.
Well, then I can sit down and we'll just get.
No, 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 I'm okay with that. But I'm still, and I'm getting what you're saying, I'm just still hung up on it a little bit. Because in theory, we're only voting on this piece of paper, and it doesn't really matter what the legislative record suggests. Because it's not attached to this. It's like, if I'm buying a home and they say, okay, I'm going to pay a hundred thousand dollars, and the person says, yeah, we're also going to put on a new roof, we're going to pave the driveway, replace the heating system and the electrical, it's about eighty thousand dollars worth of work. I'm not going to sign that I'm buying a house for a hundred thousand dollars unless that other eighty thousand dollars of work is somewhere reflected in the written agreement, even though that was always part of the discussion, and, you know, that was why I signed the, the sale contract or the purchase contract. As, just as you would in your legal capacity would suggest, anything that is part and parcel of the agreement should be contained within the agreement. This million dollars, and I, and I trust that this is what it's going to be used for, this is more, we have a lot more spending coming down the line on this. And I think it's good to have these kind of conversations at work moving forward, but, so a million dollars, I trust it will be spent the way it is, but it doesn't have to be. I mean, I, the way I read this is the mayor, if he wanted to, he could go out and spend a million dollars on, I don't know, building a new parking garage. He could start it with the million dollars here, get some engineering for it, even though that's not what, what was discussed as to how the money was going to be spent. There's no recourse in here where the council, the councilmen say, no, you misappropriated that money. Because it says, any other act, action necessary to carry out this project. And it doesn't specifically say anything about how the million dollars is going to be used, other than in furtherance of the full URDP, which, you know, has a price tag of a hundred and twenty million dollars.
Right, but that's this step along the way, and I think, first of all, with all due respect, your analogy completely fails because a whole renovation project, everything is different, plus it's a private sector transaction. In the public sector, the laws are designed to really constrain any sort of activity along the lines of what you're talking about now. Because the fact of the matter is, if the mayor takes this one million, and instead of zigging, he zags, when he comes back for the next allotment he needs, then you guys have something to pounce with, and it's going to leave the project ground to a halt. One of the things we're trying to do here with this project is send a message to the public that we're working in concert, and the mayor is not going to send that message to anybody if he tells you, I want the million for this, and then goes out precisely what you are appropriately concerned about and does something different. He's trying to come forward and portray what his plan is, and he's, it's a plan that has evolved not just from careful planning, but also from a view of mistakes in the past. So if we think we're going in the right direction, if something comes up, it'll be brought before you. But it's in the mayor's interests and the council's interests and the project's interest that we all be moving in the same direction and that no one's pulling the types of things you're concerned about, and that in and of itself overrides the language issue. The language is the vehicle to get us to a certain point, and I do grant you that the language is somewhat limiting and it doesn't give you the type of comfort level you might wish to have, but when you look at all the other outside factors there that are present, the mayor's very constrained in what he does with his money. And by the way, as an ADR tracker that's working with this body, and I think you would agree that while you have had some concerns about zigs and zags and different issues, that the mayor is someone who comes forward, my main disagreement policy-wise or otherwise, you get the facts on this. And you can come in and ask him at any time or in the way.
Depends on who's answering the question, whether or not I get the facts, but I, whenever I ask the mayor a question, I get the facts. No, I, I appreciate that, and again, I don't have a problem with the million dollars, and I'll vote in favor of the one. But as we're moving forward, you know, one of the big things is the eminent domain issue that's, that's coming out there, over that's figuring out there, and friendly taking versus hostile taking, and, you know, it's not a discussion for today, and it's not a debate for today, but it's on the near horizon, I think. Kind of fully understanding our role in authorizing expenditures, I think is important. But, so I'll leave you with this, one question perhaps. There's no way in which this million dollars could be used for purchasing any of the land contemplated for municipal taking, whether by friendly taking or eminent domain without coming back, correct?
Alright, I'll answer it this way.
The honest way?
The, as you've always said for me, the language is broad, and perhaps someone who dared to engage in chicanery might avail themselves of that language. But when you look at the totalling circumstances, the presentation, the reason the money's been asked for, and where we are on the project itself, the answer is absolutely clearly no. It can't happen.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Timmons, I'll yield back to Joe.
You, I don't know how much time I have left.
That was five minutes.
I can be nice to the person.
One thing I can shrug to recommend, I can recall that we could, because Councilor Pelucci's right in this, that we're going to have a significant amount of bonding moving forward in the future as it relates to this. And we'd really like to get bond counsel back here to talk about what our role is in improving these bonds. Let me explain why. First off, in the time I've been up here, we have amended bonds in the past to council. Sometimes not successfully, but at least the attempt was made, the opinion's always at that point in time where this body can amend a certain length of the bond, excluding, again, adding resources or dollars. But there was another incident that happened back in 2010, which, and again, the auditor, I think, can recall specifically the events of this because later we also did check to, that those were appropriate. When it was raised at that time about the question of actually using it for employees, and having raised it specifically at that moment with the council present in a, in a meeting, the council at that point in time indicated that it's the scope of the bond. And that if we have any concerns related to, policy concerns related to that, to this type of resource, that language needs to be part of, of the bond itself. And there were certain other expenses at that time, and it's funny, because here I raised it in 2010, but I was getting, I'm trying to think of a polite word, that you-know-what beat out of me in a campaign in 2015, people calling back certain expenditures, again, and I think it's tied into the streetworks thing as well, that they were challenging how appropriate they were in regards to bond expenditures, for example, luncheons or different things that had actually been covered in that bond. So, we're not going to, and again, I trust the mayor's moving forward to this, I kind of base it on what Mr. Stevens is telling me. This is pretty much a pre-development type of expenditure necessary to move forward, I accept, I accept that. But I do think we need to have kind of a more robust discussion in terms of what the role of this body is in structuring these, these particular bonds. And I would really think we would benefit from having the bond counsel present.
And I can request, our bond counsel is excellent and quite responsive, I'm happy to request something now in writing from him that you can look at.
I'd be happy to, specifically, I think the issue would be, to what, to what extent can, how can we restrict certain things, for example? And again, I'm not speaking about consultants or engineers or anything, but not utilize, for example, for hiring Quincy employees, so to speak, or something to that effect. Because he told me last time, his opinion was, given how, because how broad our bond language was, that the mayor was well within his rights of how the bond was structured to do it. So I guess the question would be if we were trying to restrict certain things by, by way of amendment?
And I think the way to do that, this is what I said to Councilor Pelucci, was that you can restrict the amount if you believe that there's fat in there, but you can't necessarily specify. But I'll confirm bond counsel because it's an excellent question. Frankly, he came as a part of this tonight because we did talk about it previously, and, but I'm happy to get his opinion, I'll request it in writing so it can be distributed. And I'm sure he'll come back and speak with you if you want to talk about it again in the fall, that's fine.
I can, I can, this is a great place to start, what you're suggesting, and again, essentially, it is, to the extent that we can restrict the scope of the bond through language by, by way of amendment?
Understood. Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
All right, Councilor Palmer.
Just sort of quick, Madam President, thank you. Most of the councils have, you know, went into depth with good information for us. I just, I don't know who would be up here to answer these questions. And I like what Mr. Timmons just said about, you know, when we come back to you for another appropriation, you're gonna be able to say, "Well, look what we did with this amount of money," or this, basically. In my terms, it almost looks like an allowance. If this gets approved, the appropriation of a million dollars, it's kind of like an allowance to see how you're gonna spend this and how we're gonna move forward with getting more appropriation. Does anybody have an idea how far this is gonna, you know, how long and how far this is gonna move us and when you predict you'll be coming back for more appropriated money? Can anybody answer that question?
Yes. We feel that this money will get us through the projects that we outlined for you. We anticipate that it'll bring us through approximately September. And then we'll be able to predict when those designs will be able to help us understand what a construction schedule will be. We'll be in a better position. Again, the monies that will be for you are basically for preliminary design work and just to keep the consultancy intact. Our council, Mr. Shea, the council, that's what this is for. So, we will probably be trying to piece something up for you in the month of September through October. And again, we'll prepare information. The other point I just did want to make is, bond council is giving the same information really that this is what it's for. Also, your auditor will tell you how very many is spent. So it's important to recognize that the spend, you would identify as council. Then said, "No, what are the spend on?" And you may come back and say, "We don't like that." You can specify, you know, bond, different things. Bonds are generally flexible enough for those items that will require a little bit of moving around. But you can't go one day at a time. Bond council is not allowed. Obviously, your auditor's gonna say, you know, "The buying tariffs..." whatever the case may be. It's important to recognize that the process on every bond is spent. And you can question every bond that has a management scheme, not just every one. It's important to know that you can look at the spend of the bonds, which you often do. And that is absolutely council's role, to make sure that there's a comfortable lie. A plot council is gonna bring the bond council before you so that people understand what their role is and what you can do to craft your bonds.
I want to be very clear, again, it's, you know, you're referencing the auditor. I mean, the problem I'm having right here with that old classic definition of what an auditor is is that they go in after the battle and kill all the wounded, you know? I mean, essentially, what we're asking is all after the fact from the auditor. It's been my experience here, I'm looking out, I see a former councillor in the gallery. We would always amend bonds to the purpose of policy. And that if we were to say, it seems to me if we were to say, you know, "No employees would be considered under this bond," it would be perfectly legitimate to do so. It seems to me that that's not entirely the opinion that we receive. But, again, I'm willing to, he's writing the questions so that we can clarify that. But again, we actually, at one point in time, actually put a project labor agreement into a bond. Not gonna do that right now. But again, I mean, these are the types of things that I feel are well within our authority. And because again, when we come back and we're saying, "Well, what about this? What about that?" And we have the bond council up in front of us, the answer's always gonna be, "It's within the scope of the bond we pass." So, to the extent that, I think we need some refreshers in terms of our ability to restrict the language of these, because I do think that that falls within our ability and our power. But again, I just want to clarify what I'm saying. Because it's not just simply that, you know, that I think we should be looking at these expenses, which we should, and making it very awful. But at the same point in time, that's not the key concern I have. The concern I have is this opinion that somehow we can't shake this. I don't think that's completely accurate. But more than anything here, what comes back, thank you. Sorry, thank you, Councilor.
No problem, no, 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 Councilor Penn. I'm just glad to wrap this up that, you know, over the course of these last six months being on the council, I feel that the administration is playing ball with us now. I didn't feel that way in the very beginning. It felt that it was kind of being slammed out on throats. And I think now the language between all the members is saying, "Hey, listen, you know what? Maybe the council is not a little bit right. Maybe they are just trying to represent the taxpayer." I understand from their standpoint. I feel that at this point in this stage, that we're moving into the "we" rather than the "I." And I know you're thinking, "That must be bad news." But I leave you with that before the vote. That I think it goes back to also the URDP and the language that you guys had fixed for the council to all be on board here. I feel that we're getting to a stage where we're all gonna move forward here together. And I feel good about it, actually. I feel good tonight. We're getting these, I call them a little bit of semi debates on how we're gonna spend the money, where it's gonna be allocated, and what's gonna be done about it. But I'm gonna support this tonight and we're gonna see how this goes and when we come back for another appropriation.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, motion to approve by Councilor Cole, seconded by Councilor Harris. On the motion, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Crowe.
Yes.
Councilor Ford.
Yes.
Councilor Penn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Ford.
Yes.
Councilor Palucci.
Yes.
President, please.
Yes.
All right, now, Chief O'Leary, I just turn everyone's attention on reading out of the Madison Penitent for the City Council. I'm on page four. And I'm looking specifically at Order 2016-122A, which is a $5 million appropriation for reconstruction of roads and sidewalks. This was debated in the last Finance Committee session and came forward with a positive recommendation. And I'm going to go...
Motion to approve by Councilor Cole, seconded by Councilor Harris. On the motion, anyone wishing to speak?
Yes.
Councilor Kane.
So this, I guess we're gonna break this down piece by piece as it had been presented to us before. But this is part of what was originally presented to us as a five-year capital improvement plan. So we're looking for a total bond authorization of over $19 million. A Phase 1 project of the capital improvement plan. I have a reluctance to move forward with voting yes on any of the following ordinances just because of the way that this plan is presented and the lack of information therein. I think, you know, in the original PowerPoint presentation that was presented up here before the council, you know, I had to add all the numbers up myself. Numbers didn't equal what the bond authorization was looking for in total. And we don't understand what the future of this project is going to look like. We see a Phase 1 that's been presented. I don't know what Phase 2 through X amount of phases will look like. And I don't know what spending will look like over the five years of this proposed five-year capital improvement plan. I don't know if this $5 million is just for year one and so forth in total to the $20 million that was presented in the original PowerPoint presentation. In terms of reconstruction of roads and sidewalks, these are very important things. Purchase of equipment and vehicles, every single portion of this capital improvement plan are very important items for the city to keep its operations running in the future. But I would just hope that someone could present to us in an orderly fashion with some thought and some rationale behind any of these projects. You know, why do we need them? What's being replaced? How are we looking at the city in general? What streets are being paved in an orderly fashion? And that goes for each of these items that are in the Finance Committee. So I just, you know, I have a very difficult time supporting this tonight because we're not thinking about this in terms of the project as a whole. I went and did some homework. I, you know, took a look at cities and how they put together their capital improvement plans. And there's a lot of thinking that's put into them. People put together very sophisticated financial models, which I've heard about, I just haven't seen any yet. People put in, you know, scoring mechanisms for how the streets and the sidewalks look. They look at the equipment, they understand the life cycle of the equipment and when it's winding down and when we need to pick back up. And how this financing, which it is financing, looks over the long term. But, I mean, I understand, there was one schedule that was presented that shows how we're gonna be paying down this bond over the next 20 years. But again, this is called Phase 1. So how much is Phase 2? How much is Phase 3? How much is Phase 4? And where does that spending come over the five years of this five-year capital improvement plan? So, as much as I understand we need this money to improve many different aspects in departments of our city, there's no way that I'd support it because it's a very ill-off. You know, I want to know that the money that we're gonna authorize through bond is going to be spent smartly and intelligently and we're not wasting anything. We just went through a considerable number of approvals for different types of money across the board. And, you know, that money was existing in many places, so we didn't need to bring it back up and come out of anywhere that we didn't know it existed before. But this is new money that will cost us a lot more over the long term. And I want to know that we have a plan in place to spend it appropriately. So I will not be voting in favor of any portion of this capital improvement plan tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kane. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Councilor Palucci.
Thank you. And I just, fellow councillor, when I first came into council, Tony gave me some advice. And one of them was, you know, don't always be committed to your positions before you listen to your colleagues speak. And I just wanted to, on this particular matter, I just wanted to thank Councilor Kane for his input on this. And I value that and I try and keep an open mind about things. I am gonna support this, but it's by the thinnest of margins, if you will. Just because I feel, Ward 4 at least, and it's probably the same in other wards, but just from my own perspective, we are so desperate for infrastructure improvements to sidewalks and roads that I couldn't, I couldn't, on a procedural reason, on a make point, I couldn't vote against this. Although, I have to, and feel obligated to say that I think it's a very good point that Councilor Kane is making. This goes back to the point in years past that I've been asked that we have a capital improvement plan so that we can see what the, I mean, other communities, other communities have a rolling five-year capital improvement plan. So you can find it online, you can see, "Okay, they need a fire truck within the next five to 10 years. Here it is. This is what every department's needs are gonna be." And you can just go and vote. That way, you know, the city council, the taxpayer, they can see how it is that monies in the future will be spent and what the needs are. So maybe a need comes in and jumps above one another because, you know, a piece of equipment breaks. But you can see what the long-term strategic planning is to use bonded money over a large portion of time. I don't think we do that in the city. And what we've done in the past, and not so much this year because we're taking steps at least in the right direction, but we haven't got on that spending spree where we buy all the capital improvement projects or buy all the capital needs, address all the capital needs with free cash, as the D O R calls it, at the end of the year. So, I think we're making progress in the right direction, but I wholeheartedly support what Councilor Kane is saying. I mean, you can't give us a presentation with the numbers literally don't add up. Literally, the numbers didn't add up. That information was asked for at the last Finance Committee meeting. I still haven't received it, I don't know if Councilor Kane has. I know, obviously, some items aren't up tonight. I'm not gonna be voting on the bulk of some of the capital improvement plans. But on this particular one, and this is the only one that I would support despite what Councilor Kane said, because I think it's such an important issue that he raises that we really do need to be prudent and upfront about what these expenses are going to be. And I think that there's a lot of work that could be done to put that out there in terms of what those needs are moving forward and how the money's going to be spent. As Councilor Kane, he said it far better than I can. But, you know, we're in Phase 1. What are the other phases? What does that look like? What's the cost to the taxpayer? Where does that leave us with other capital needs? Because in my request, when I said I'd like, I think I did a part resolution this year. In years past, I've just asked for it. This year, I think we did a part resolution where he said, "I'd like to know every department's capital needs." Instead, what we got was just about everything under the sun capital plan. But some of the, at least one or two of the department heads said that they had needs that weren't covered in the capital plan. So I want to know what we're not covering too. I mean, this is a discussion, this is a deliberation. You know, if one particular department leased 10 different vehicles or 10 different items, but in this capital plan, they're only getting four, six, or eight, there's still other needs. We should know that as a financial planning body. We should know that moving forward. I don't just want to know the ones that the administration thinks are the priority to buy in the next five years. I want to know what the needs are going to be moving forward and what perhaps are the needs that we don't see, we don't see an urgent need to make that capital improvement right now, that capital cost right now. So, I just, this is a long-winded way of saying, I fully support what you're saying, Councilor Kane. I couldn't agree more. However, I feel badly about this. I will support this, in terms of what you said, I feel badly about. But I will support this particular measure. But I do support what you're saying. I hope that, I hope that the administration does provide that additional detail that you requested in the last meeting certainly we were looking for. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Palmer?
Thank you, Madam President. I just quickly, I agree with Councilor Palucci and Councilor Kane's wanting more information on what roads, what sidewalks, what's the whole package gonna look like over a five-year period. And I agree with it and I respect his thoughts and his opinions and how he feels about that. But for me, we have a huge traffic problem in the city of Quincy and we really need to step forward with the roads and sidewalks. And I'm gonna put it in good faith that the administration's gonna do a really good job of finding the right roads to pave and the sidewalks and to basically mitigate that traffic. I think a lot of it has to do with some of the roads and sidewalks around the city, public safety with the sidewalks. I'm in good faith that, you know, they're gonna allocate this $5 million in the right direction. And I'm gonna be in full support for this one. Because in my personal opinion, I would never not want to put some of this sidewalk repairs into a regular budget, I think, and sidewalks and roads. Because I think that is an area that we need to continuously, not just continuously put potholes and fill them. I think that we need to get into the road and sidewalks more. So I'm gonna be in full support for this tonight on my vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So the motion was made by Councilor Crowe, seconded by Councilor Harris. And Madam Clerk, if you would take the vote, please.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Forgive me, I know I've been a little dazed and confused this evening. But what specifically are we voting on?
Council Order 2016-122A.
A, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes.
I just wanted to be sure.
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Councilor Kane.
No.
Councilor Crowe.
Yes.
Councilor Ford.
Yes.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Ford.
Yes.
Councilor Palucci.
Yes.
President, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Paul.
Thank you. Madam President, the next item, working off the same book, is 2016-122B, which is an appropriation of $5,325,000 for purchase of equipment, new vehicles. which is an appropriation of $5,325,000 for purchased equipment, new vehicles, coming out of committee with a positive recommendation.
All right, motion approved by Councilor Crowell, seconded by Councilor Harris. On the motion. Anyone wishing to be heard? All right, Madam Clark.
Councilor Kane.
No.
Councilor Crowell.
Yes.
Councilor Devon.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Farrar.
Yes.
Councilor Van Lukey.
No.
President of the House.
Yes. Councilor Paul.
Okay, next, next item is 2016-122C, like Charlie. We're not, we're not speaking about the total appropriation amount as part of the email that I sent out to the committee prior to the hearing yet this evening. I don't know who from the mayor's office or representative is going to speak to the individual item, but just for specifics, the building spreadsheets that I sent out, we're referring specifically to item number 20 on that spreadsheet that outlined the masonry work for North Quincy High School. I don't know if Mr. Walker wants to take that.
I think Mr. Resio is approaching the podium to speak to that. Mr. Resio.
What do you wish to, Chairman?
Thank you.
Hold on, wait. This is, this is for side work at North Quincy High School. There's no immediate threat, but clearly it is a worsening condition that can develop and become a safety issue. This is, what you're sitting in front of you is on the east squanton side of the building and around the back of the building. The request is for, the city engineer had to leave, the request is to fund design services and to help fund the cost of some of the repairs. We don't know what the immediate cost will be. It could be expensive. We are concerned about some of the issues, the freeze cost cycle. You can see that stops from the top of the building and comes down leading to the length of the building. If the condition worsens, we feel that we could start to lose some of these bricks. It becomes a safety issue.
Anyone, so is there a motion to approve by Councilor Crowell? Yes or no? I'm sorry. I missed that if there was. No motion? All right, so you did vote on the motion. Okay. Okay. Councilor Harris. No, no motion. So motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All right, on the motion to approve by Councilor Harris. Is there a second?
May I just clear something up for the committee as well, procedurally? Because the overall ask for public buildings was $3 million. I had a conversation with Chris Walker prior to the meeting, and he had identified several items that he wanted to speak about this evening, two of which are the public buildings, the boilers, and the masonry work. So providing whatever goes forward here this evening, that order gets amended to reflect that respective amount. So we're not voting on $3 million. We'll pick up that conversation, correct me if I'm wrong, how we anticipate the fall, any kind of color if you can around the outstanding items?
Mr. Walker? Did you want to respond to the question, Councilor? Councilor Paul?
Agree with this decision.
Okay.
I should have mentioned that at the beginning, but it's just important for the committee to weigh that.
Okay, so what is the total appropriation then for, what are we actually voting on, then, Councilor?
We're voting on the.
2016-122C.
$310,000, I believe.
$310,000.
Let me just take a step back off that. This particular item, is it going to be addressed individually? Number 20 on the spreadsheet that reflects the total $3 million of public buildings asked. Number 20 shows the masonry work. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, this particular item, speaking to anybody this evening, is $250,000.
You want to mark a red, Councilor?
So that's what we're on. That's what we're speaking about.
Okay, so you want to amend the order to say $250,000?
It's good, it's an overall amendment, Harrison. There's two things that we're going to talk about. Al's number of $310,000 reflects the masonry work that you speak about now and your prospect of replacing boilers through the MSBA, which is $60,000. So there are two items that all rolled up under the public buildings asked.
Okay.
If that makes sense?
It does.
Okay.
Okay, so we're weighted to 2016-122C, the appropriation that is going to be amended to say $310,000, correct? Madam Auditor, is that correct?
That.
There are two separate votes.
Okay, do they have to be one? It's one order, so we'll need to break it out if they. Madam Montoya, do you have something to add to that?
I do believe that the order amount that you're going to amend to is $310,000. And then you would be discussing each item separately, but the total, if you want to move forward with both of those items, the total would be $310,000.
Okay. All right, good. Are we good? Madam, Madam Montoya, one second. So. Go ahead, Councilor, again. Did you have a question?
I think we're making Councilor Kane, Councilor Kane's position make much more sense here in the press conference. And from a point-of-war perspective, I mean, who's making this motion? I mean, we had an initial motion that I guess, towards the Councilor Harris, but it was like approving the President 122C we have in the calendar. So I guess the question is, who's making this amendment at this point in time to that?
Point of parliamentary procedure hasn't even been seconded yet. So the original motion dies, meant to be able to lack of second.
Good. Okay, so.
So somebody prepared to make a motion that it be the lesser rung amount?
Let's say ask Councilor Crowell if he would prepare, if he was making a motion, but he said no. Are you ready?
I'd love to know if there's a discussion. Does anyone have any questions for? Do you want to cover the boilers way out there?
The boiler is, the boiler project is an MSBA reimbursable project. $60,000 for initial design work, which will be reimbursable by MSBA. But we have to put the money up first.
He anticipated where it happened in the off season with the design school. That's the goal there.
Well, it's, you know, we have to go through the whole MSBA process, but we have to see the initial approval. So this is the first phase, do the initial design work, and then the bid work and all of that. So this is, we have to fund this ourselves, and then we will be here first. And then we will come back to you for whatever the appropriations.
This is preliminary.
Yes.
Design, project, that work.
Yeah, and every MSBA project, this is what we have to do. We have to fund it, initial design. We estimate it's about $60,000.
And I understand it's, you know, an important measure to ensure that we keep the heating systems in the schools in the best working conditions and when possible. As far as that masonry work on North Quincy High School builds, about $250,000. That's not too completely, this is just a portion, identified sections of a building that are in this report.
Correct. To identify and to try to come up with a cost, initial design, if there is any, you could probably start the project, get some of it done in the worst areas. Could be, you know, we'll find out what the, how significant the problem is, what the cost would be.
So again, we're moving on, an amended order for the public building, the overall ask.
Again, the point of order, I don't think anyone's made that motion here.
Nobody's made any motion. There's no motion on the floor at all. Well, it did die because it didn't have second. So there's no motion on the floor right now.
With that, I think what I'll move, and again, I, with some hesitancy myself, but particularly as it relates to the MSBA and also the ability to achieve this work, I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve the masonry work number 20 on the CIP Phase One and number 22, the $60,000 for $310,000 for the feasibility and schematic design costs. Again, given the timing issue, I think, and I, particularly as it relates to the school buildings and everything, if we had this, this particular summary in place, I probably would be prepared here to support the whole thing this evening. But, but again, I think Councilor Kane's points were taken. But based on specifically this and the timing framework, particularly around the MSBA issue, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay, so he made it together, but do they require a separate second of the work? Can he make them together?
Yeah, I'll.
Okay, great. So the motion made by Councilor Finn, seconded by Councilor Devon, on the motion, Councilor Devon.
$310,000 is the motion.
Yes.
That covers what, Al?
I'm sorry, Councilor?
That covers what?
The boilers.
In the design work?
Correct.
Okay. What is design services? We designed outside of the.
Well, they committed, I believe they did, they would, I'm not an engineer, so commit, assess the situation. Probably would prepare the documents to see what the cost is going to be, and go from there.
So design, when I hear designing services, I think it's, right, they're not designing a new exterior, right?
Engineering terms.
Fair enough. So that's, it's the boilers and the exterior.
Yes, yes.
All right, and then something separate is going to be the sterling, right?
Yes, yeah.
All right. I want you to check any of that.
No, no, no.
Yep, I'm happy, I'm good. Thank you.
Councilor Paul.
Real quick on the motion, just on the MSBA with the boilers, we, Quincy, we have a really good relationship with them, and this is very important, that we'll get, you know, between 70% to 80% reimbursement on this. We have a good standard relationship with them, so I do foresee us getting a good 70 cents to 80 cents of the dollar coming back to us. So we just have to front it right now, and I think it will come back to us. That ought to have the motion I second, but I yield to Councilor Finn.
I think that, given Councilor Devon's remarks, and specifically the distinction between this being an MSBA project and the other being part of the, simply part of the capital plan per se, if we could, if I could, if we could do these as separate, because I think that there's going to be difference of vote in terms of each of those. So if I could make a motion that, that we do these separately, I'd make first a motion on number 20, the masonry work for Quincy High School.
Okay, so on the $250,000 for masonry work for North Quincy High School, a motion to approve by Councilor Finn, seconded by Councilor Devon, on the motion. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Yes, Councilor Harris.
Let's get it fixed, please. I have a city, Ellen, this is a voice fix. Again, a lot going on there. A lot of trucks going by right now. I don't want to see anybody, my children, any adults, or any dog, cat, except for rats. Let's switch past this, please. Thank you.
Okay, and then you, Councilor Harris. Yes, Councilor Devon, too.
Al, the administration repurposed $1 million tonight to fix a gymnasium. You could have equally have repurposed that money to fix this. There was a concern that children and cats were in danger of falling bricks, right? I mean, you could have, if this was an emergency, the order that passed earlier tonight, it could have been, it could have been introduced to, you repurpose already existing borrowed money for a gymnasium and now seeking to borrow additional money here for the facade. So it's in the scale of priorities.
They're not saying it's an emergency yet, Councilor, but it's in capital interest.
Okay.
Well, I mean, that's why it was put in the CIP.
I'm concerned when I hear that, you know, children's safety is at risk. I mean, that changes the calculus here, and it really causes me to question why it would be in the capital improvement, long-term, five-year plan, and not in the money we just repurposed tonight that's sitting in an account that we already have that can be implemented tomorrow? I mean, it's $1 million, it can be implemented tomorrow to fix that gym. So if this was an emergency of such dire consequences, where children and cats were in harm's way, I would, I would think that the mayor, in his wisdom, would use the money that's already, to me, this has to go out. We have to sell this bond on the market. I mean, that takes time. So I would think that if it was such a dire consequence here that public safety was being jeopardized, I mean, we use existing money, that really caused me to question my previous vote, if that's, if that's the case, but.
I think what I said, if you listen, the opening statement was.
It's not a problem now. I'm worried about the frost here, it's right, I heard that.
What?
Yeah, I'm not saying you said it, I just, you know. Thank you.
But as you can see in the picture, it could develop into a problem, we have concerns.
Okay, good, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, great, we'll go ahead and vote on the amended $250,000 for masonry work at North Quincy High School, and approve, call it all.
Councilor Kane.
No.
Councilor Crowell. Councilor Devon.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris.
Yes.
Councilor Farrar.
Yes.
Councilor Van Lukey.
No.
President of the House.
Yes. Councilor Finn.
Yes, Madam President, I have a motion that number 22, boilers, that's tied to the MSBA, MSBA, for $60,000.
All right, motion to approve $60,000 to the MSBA, made by Councilor Finn, seconded by Councilor Devon, on the motion. Anyone wishing to be heard? Very well, Madam.
Councilor Kane.
Yes.
Councilor Crowell. Councilor Devon.
Yes.
Councilor Finn.
Yes.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Farrar.
Yes.
Councilor Van Lukey. President of the House, you want?
Thank you, Councilors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Crowell.
Madam President, back to the booklet here. We're looking at, we're on our 2016-122, I as in Indigo, which is an appropriation for $100,000 for pest pourings and has this material testing that's going to be available. So I don't know if, Solicitor Timmons, I know you did a really good job of the memo that you'd sent to me that I circulated around to the board. I don't know if you want to speak to that at all. Is that up? Well, I mean, you put a good body of work, so I just wanted to be able to stand up there and take credit on our last meeting before we go on to the break.
Well, if there were questions or whatever, I'm happy to answer them, but if the President.
Well, if there were questions or whatever, I'm happy to answer them, but if the president didn't, um, handle things.
Councillor Ponge has a question.
It seemed like you really wanted some, so I, I would lie to you, Mr. Timmons.
No, I was sitting there.
No, and this is reimbursable, this hundred thousand dollars, it's, uh, it's term of those bills reimbursable by the MSBA.
I'm not certain, uh, because that's still in question. Um, it's, it's rolling in with a package of reimbursable money, and, um, when we filed our engineering costs down the road, this is work that would have had to have been done a little later, uh, but we're doing it now because we're trying to firm up the foundation design. Now that the school has taken form, and we know where it's going on the site, um, there were some particular issues, um, where when they did the preliminary schematic design type work, um, they found what they call resistance when they were doing their preliminary boards. So we've got a much more thorough layout here. How that's going to end up being reimbursed, some of it's going to be reimbursed, but I don't know if it's going to be the normal reimbursement rate.
The whole business, this is reimbursable, though.
Yes, that's correct, and then the, um, the hazardous material work relates to the demolition, there's a certain part of the building that's to be taken down. And, um, so this summer, we're, we're trying to work on the school cycle, while the building's empty, we'll go in and do that work. So it'll get done now, and we won't lose, uh, the two or three months plus, had we not done.
Okay, thank you, I don't know if anyone has any other questions, councillor Finn for purposes, to continue in that discussion. Um, make a motion, Madam Monitor, my amending, uh, you guys say Indigo?
No, do you know, the appropriation was originally going like a thousand dollars.
So I'll, I'll move, uh, passage.
Okay, motion to approve by councillor Ponge, seconded by councillor Devon, anyone wishing to be heard on the motion?
Yeah.
Councillor Kane.
When is this going to be done? Anyone, through you, councillor.
Mister Sillister.
Well, what's the question I'm thinking, Brian, is this testing going to be performed? When, when is this being performed? Um, I'm not sure in January, uh, if we, uh, actually, no, some of the work has already been performed, some of the boring work. They went out during the April vacation and did some of it, um, they're going to be back there now that school is up. So I'm not sure exactly how that's all going to play out. I know they did some preliminary work during the April vacation, and, um, they had to come back out during the summer. And, um, and then the hazardous material work inside the building is all going to be done now that school is up. The timing, I'm not sure. Right, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Park, to come through, things, councillor Finn.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Devon.
Yes.
Councillor Finn.
Yes.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Councillor LeFarge.
Yes.
Councillor Ponge.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Madam President, the final matter for the CPE is orders two zero one six hyphen one two two J, appropriation for a one point four million dollars, for purposes requiring two parts.
All right, thank you, um, councillor Crowe, um, I, it's odd if I'm going to make a motion about president, president, but, I mean, was somebody recording my motion, pass, I don't speak to it. Okay, motion to approve. Okay, motion to approve by councillor Devon, needs to be seconded, I, seconded by councillor Harris, on the motion, councillor Devon.
Thank you, Madam President, um, just a little bit on this one point four million dollar allocation, um, under the CPC, uh, Community Preservation Committee, um, we, back in spring of two thousand and fifteen, Colby, the, um, chairman, already made a strong recommendation to approve up to one point two million dollars. This was being talked about prior this evening, type of transaction, and we're into it right now, so, there would be probably a leftover of two hundred thousand dollars on the table here, um, that's one point two million would be allocated from this fund. It's under the four main, um, you know, um, subjects of historical preservation, recreation, open space, affordable housing, and it falls under one of those four criteria, so, we're looking in, in, being, uh, on the CPC and wanting representatives on the committee, uh, it looks very strong that this will pass from the, from the board, and the one point two million dollars will be approved from that to be used for this fund. And with that said, I made a motion to approve this.
All right, thank you councillor Devon. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Yes, councillor Ponge.
I just, um, I, I'm a little confused as to why, and, I'm inclined to support this, I'm just, I'm a little confused as to why this is being handled differently than the normal CPA money process, perhaps to Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Clarify.
Through you, Madam President, a few things going on here, first of all, it's a, it's a major investment. Um, it stands on its own, to some degree, outside of some of the other CPC recommendations, and this was also recommended, um, going past a year now, um, but the due diligence process, uh, took a substantial amount of time developing the PNS, developing, um, everything else that needed to be done, um, and as we were developing the capital plan, um, you know, there was just the thought that, you know, this falls into the category of acquisitions, even though it's funded by the CPC, um, to put it in as part of the capital plan and have it acting on as part of the capital plan because most, all of the other CPC projects had already been approved. Um, so I think we were, it was, it was a timing thing more than anything else councillor, but also, uh, the extent to which this is a, a little bit different than some of the other projects, um.
That's not, I'm sure Joyce probably passed the camera off, or wasn't there one thing with the rest of them?
I think there have been, there absolutely have been open space passes that have come in together, um, with the rest of the projects, but again, this one's a little bit more, this is a little bit different because, again, the due diligence took a little bit of extra time, um, there was movement parts here, um, and, you know, the process from the committee's original recommendation, and back in two thousand and fifteen, it just didn't fit into the normal, uh, appropriation mode.
So may I say that the borrowing of the money, um, is this reimbursable?
No, this is how, essentially, yes, this is, this would be like an offset.
You realize, you said no and yes, within a very short span of time.
I'm good, I'm good at that, um, this would be an offset, like maybe the other, number of the other CPC projects that we have this building. For example, is offset, the financing is offset by annual expenditure from CPC, um, there might be one or two others that are offset, um, the Carlton Hall is another one.
So how does that, just re, refresh my recollection as to how that works in terms of, how, how, how would this work going forward? So, assuming that this matters tonight, the money's borrowed under the, uh, capital.
Whatever, and whatever the borrowing, uh, cost is, short-term first, and then long-term, uh, would be covered by annual CPC appropriation.
Okay, so CPC, CP, the CPC using CPA grade would send that over to offset the use of.
Correct.
So it's almost like, or it is being reimbursed.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, but how does that affect their bonding capacity? Because, I mean, they have a capacity, a limited.
Yeah, you, councillor, if you, um, step back, we did substantial amount in your first year of CPC when it came to open space pressures, I think it was upwards of five million in that first year, um, that had to be flushed out or paid back within those five years because of the state legal required, has to be because they have the ability to repeal the law. Um, that money has loosened up in that time, um, and there's not much, yeah, I say not much, but.
Is it not in their borrowing capacity to take on this debt, is essentially what you're saying?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ponge, I would just like to urge my, um, colleagues to pass this tonight, uh, as the councillor in whom, uh, this sits, um, in my ward, it is so important to preserve the integrity of the space, and it is such an iconic and historical aspect of the neighborhood, um, of course to the city, but, but in more immediate, uh, to the neighborhood. And this has been, um, a concern and certainly on mine of residents in the neighborhood, uh, since even TIG has decided to, uh, vacate those premises, and that is coming quickly, so, um, grateful to, uh, Community Preservation Committee for, um, investing in this particular project, and find it to be, uh, very worthwhile, and, uh, something that, again, just preserves the integrity of the neighborhood and, and the city really as a whole. And, uh, I would just urge my colleagues this evening to join me in voting if they want to. So with that, I'd ask the party to vote please.
Councillor Kane.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Devon.
Yes.
Councillor Finn.
Yes.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Councillor LeFarge.
Yes.
Councillor Ponge.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Thank you. Very well.
I keep losing the segment of the CPE.
Well, thank you very much councillor Crowe, thank you for your work, I know it's been a tough couple of, uh, months, but we appreciate your work and kind of, thank you. Uh, next report of committees, Madam Park, this area.
I, I have some, got from the Public Works Committee Utilities to pass.
Public Works, yeah.
Yes, um, two thousand.
Of course, thank you councillor, fantastic.
I wasn't made aware of those, these are moved out to CPE.
Yes, they were, had they been two meetings ago, Bill, back on our street.
Usually, again.
Yes councillor Finn.
Do you have any orders? All right, okay, something do we have?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Here's the, uh.
So the first one is two thousand sixteen one forty-nine, the grant of location to Comcast, um, again, the Public Works, uh, offers a favorable, uh.
Recommendation. Favorable recommendation by councillor, uh, Finn, uh, seconded by councillor Devon, on the motion.
Actually, I'm on street, on street.
Thank you. Madam Park.
Councillor Kane.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe. Councillor Devon.
Yes.
Councillor Finn.
Yes.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Councillor LeFarge.
Yes.
Councillor Ponge.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
A, uh, two thousand sixteen dash one fifty, a, um, grant of location to mass electric company between Cantrac Street and Hunt Street, uh, favorable recommendation.
Favorable recommendation, motion to pass by councillor Finn, seconded by councillor Harris, on the motion, Madam Park.
Councillor Kane.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe. Councillor Devon.
Yes.
Councillor Finn.
Yes.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Councillor LeFarge.
Yes.
Councillor Ponge.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Two thousand sixteen one fifty-one, grant of location Horizon, Cantrac Street and Hunt Street, uh, recommend favorable.
All right, motion to approve by councillor Finn, seconded by councillor Harris, sorry, catching councillor Finn on.
I don't know.
Councillor Harris, uh, Madam Park, to come through.
Councillor Kane.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Devon.
Yes.
Councillor Finn.
Yes.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Councillor LeFarge.
Yes.
Councillor Ponge.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
We have two thousand sixteen one fifty-three, easement of mass electric city-owned property, Cantrac Street and Hunt Street, such relocation, so take the underground, the street utilities on Hunt Street, provide utility services to the campus expansion of North Quincy High, uh, High School. Um, the city solicitors shall negotiate the terms of the easement, uh, again, positive recommendation.
Okay, motion approved by councillor Finn, seconded by councillor Harris, on the motion, Madam Park.
Councillor Kane.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe. Councillor Devon.
Yes.
Councillor Finn.
Yes.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Councillor LeFarge.
Yes.
Councillor Ponge.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
And finally, two thousand sixteen, uh, one fifty-four, which is again, easement to Horizon, uh, similar city-owned property, Cantrac Street and Hunt Street, and then such relocation, so take the underground and the street utilities on Hunt Street, provide utility services to the campus expansion, expansion of North Quincy High School, uh, recommend, uh, positive recommendation.
Okay, positive recommendation, motion approved by councillor Finn, seconded by councillor Harris, on the motion, Madam Park.
Councillor Kane.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe. Councillor Devon.
Yes.
Councillor Finn.
Yes.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Councillor LeFarge.
Yes.
Councillor Ponge.
Yes.
President Hughes.
I, I believe that one in what order, sorry councillor Finn, one five two, which we did not want, sorry.
I do not, I hear this.
That's fair.
Two thousand sixteen one fifty-two, an easement, Comcast city-owned property, Cantrac Street and Hunt Street, uh, the language is, the language is, to still take the underground and the street services on Hunt Street, provide utility services to the campus expansion of North Quincy High School. Just like one fifty-two, I thought I, I thought I had to make that motion to accept.
Motion to accept, uh, by councillor Finn, seconded by councillor Harris, on the motion, Madam Park.
Councillor Kane.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe. Councillor Devon.
Yes.
Councillor Finn.
Yes.
Councillor Harris.
Yes.
Councillor LeFarge.
Yes.
Councillor Ponge.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
All right, thank you, thank you councillor Finn, um, all right, presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance, anyone? Anyone, yes councillor Ponge.
I just wanted to, uh, briefly remonstrate by way of, um, giving kudos to, uh, one of our colleagues, and I joined an event, uh, last, I think it's Thursday, councillor Crowe's fundraising event for the inclusive playground, I just, I know you put a lot of work into it, I know his wife has also put a lot of work into it, I just wanted to give, uh, kudos, it looks like it'll be a terrific project, um, terrific addition to the city to have an inclusive playground, and, um, I just wanted to thank him for, for going above and beyond what is the day-to-day job and roles and responsibilities of a city councillor, really, you know, fill out his effort and try and bring for something in the board, and, uh, to make a, a good improvement to the city overall, so I just wanted to thank you councillor Crowe for that, for that, to you and your wife, but thank you.
Thank you, if I may. Agreed, yes. I, I appreciate the words of praise, um, councillor Ponge, there were, uh, so many hands that touched that project, I couldn't even know where it started, and, you know, it's just, it's just that, and people working together, and donating to the, to the raffle as well, councillor Harris was, uh, was DJing, named Anthony, and just so many folks, citywide really, and, um, you know, just to be a small part of that was, uh, was something special, so I probably would want to thank everyone who are rallying together and, um, you know, get the resources, which is important, but at the end of the day, you know, every child in the city will have an opportunity to integrate amongst their peers and, uh, you know, collaborate, so, um, appreciate you pointing that out, and I just want to thank the committee and everyone who came out last time, so, thank you.
Thank you councillor Crowe, councillor, we're lost.
Thank you, Madam, Madam President, I wish I had something positive to say, but now unfortunately I need to remonstrate, uh, as we, during this session of the council's review, we still are awaiting update from FEMA, probably through our flood maps, we were told that our deals except for last summer, we were expected to amend the maps here in August, we have since submitted all of our information very timely to FEMA, FEMA has not been so timely in their response. We come upon, as I've talked about multiple times in this chamber, there are no periods for a lot of those policies, this is costing many constituents a lot of money, you know, FEMA's lack of, um, a time to respond. Regularly getting emails now with the renewals on, just, uh, further away, residents showing on the appeals map, it's posted on our website, that their property should, their home should be out of flood lane, yet they are still being required to renew their flood insurance and pay these additional funds, knowing they're coming out of flood lane. Um, I gotta give kudos, note to Ed Clayton, he consistently emails me any concerns on the insurance side, and he just sent over a concern that people are confused that they think because these maps were anticipated August eight, that they can let their policy lapse because they're going offline, and just wanted some communication out there not to do that, even though, um, we would expect common tests to say you're being mapped out until these maps are received by the city from FEMA. Residents should not be, uh, residents should make sure that they're renewing their policies, so, very frustrating for me, the majority of my, you know, of law clients that are trans living in flood lane, flood insurance is definitely, um, it's been very confusing with all of these changes. We have been kind of in a waiting mode for a very long time for information, and here we are, recessed for summer, and still no update as requested from FEMA. Last I have heard from the administration, is that FEMA has sent in, um, requests for additional information. So it's like, we keep sending out these, though the batch is a thirty days, they can ask any more questions. more questions. At what point do we, you know, we want to make sure these maps are right, but as to, you know, update as is intended now, FEMA has not suggested that's not an option. So, we are still in the waiting game, and it's very frustrating. You know, I know for myself, who's pretty drilled in in the details, knowledgeable in the subject, but how frustrating for that homeowner, that every situation is different for them. So, I just wanted to express some frustration unfortunately this evening.
Thank you, Councilor LaFors, and Council King.
Something a little more positive, I guess, just want to give a little hat tip and shout out to the great event, as we talked about earlier last week in Wals, in Walsnaut's Autumn, called Porch Fest, which is a first-of-a-kind kind of music festival meets outdoor block party-ish. And there's a little write-up in the ledger today, and, you know, it kind of gave me credit for coming up with that idea, but the concept, everything, the day would have been nothing without our help from Discover Quincy, our friends over there, for such help in promoting the event, but also the co-chair of the event, Walter Hugley, who we all know very well. In terms of execution, organization, effort, he put in the mother lode and really made this day what it was, which was thoroughly jointed for many parts of the city. So, just want to make sure that credit is given where it is due, and moving forward to working on more events like this for us, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor King. Anyone else? I just want to take a moment right now to express the support and sorrow. I know Al Reso is here this evening from the mayor's office, and just to offer our joint condolences to your family, the passing of your mother Helen, who passed away this week at the age of ninety-three. She was a resident at Eventide, born and raised Quincy, raised her five children here in Quincy, and clearly was loved by so many people, and she's survived by your dad, obviously, who still is at Eventide, and is just a wonderful person, and I think anybody who was able to attend the week or just felt the love for her and your dad's just joy over the seventy years that they had together. So, our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family at what's definitely a difficult time these next few days, so just to express that. And with that, I would ask if anyone has...
Okay.
So, so...
Well, we're not done, motion to order some resolutions.
That's what you were doing.
No, we're not, so, motion to order some... Yes, Councilor King?
Yes, again, I just want to ensure the period of time for notice, and it's a brilliant problem that actually, again, has come up again and again since 2011. And I don't think my requests are that unreasonable to get a better explanation of this. And it's referencing, again, 348 C Street and the stop bus stop in front of a gas filling filling station, and the difficulties that that particularly presents. And again, this was something that I had submitted some legislation last fall, but then was told that that was fine, that the stop had been moved. It's my understanding that the MBTA has returned to stopping at that specific location. And part of the reason that it's always been sensitive to me is because there was a letter, in fact, I, again, someone forwarded it, caught me, again, where originally the Quincy Fire Department had actually said that they thought that this presented a public safety issue. And so, what I'd really like to do is I'd like to just clarify this once and for all. And so, I'm basically having an order that's asking for the fire department to look at this in a larger perspective, and if I could, if you bear with me very quickly. Whereas the public safety of the location of bus stops proximate to gas filling stations have been in question since 2011, specifically as it refers to the constantly changing bus stop at 2348 C Street, and whereas in the initial evaluation, the Quincy Fire Department suggested this site presented serious concerns for public safety, now therefore be it ordered that the Quincy Fire Department conduct an analysis of bus stop locations in proximity to filling stations throughout the city, and to report in writing any issues or concerns related to potential threats presented by the proximity of bus stops to these filling stations to public safety. And I just think that this is, has been serious enough of an issue in the past, that I would ask that my colleagues support the request for such a study. I've been told in the past that people don't want the president of moving every stop sign away from a gas station, but nobody can tell me, or excuse me, a stop sign, a bus station, bus stop sign in front of every gas station, but no one can tell me where else it occurs. This is the only instance that I know of it. So, again, I would move that the Quincy Fire Department conduct such a study, and let's resolve this once and for all.
Agreed. Okay, so, a motion made by Councilor Finn, sorry, second? Okay, on the motion. Councilor Crowell?
So, offhand, the second station is B, this is a bus stop adjacent to B, in a section of Compton and Southern Hattery. The more one is also, is a very popular bus location on C Street and Hosneck. There's a bigger problem with the MBTA than the gas station bus stops, and that is, for example, they just decided to delete the bus stop at the end of, I can't remember, Chikatoga at C, where people go to our daily constant church. No information, no response to our request of why was that bus stop deleted? So, I had a meeting last year with the MBTA, which gave out to do a lot of interviews, which include change, do sixteen moves, that make these half hasn't changed as to. We're requesting for information in two blocks. I mean, there's, to me, we need to bring the MBTA before this board to talk about changes to be proved, because people have the impression of, Councilor, because we moved a stop, we moved a bus stop, and in the situation where I've been asked, for example, last year, right two days before school started, the MBTA thought it was a good idea that they delete two bus stops on Stafford Road in the middle of the public housing development where students, public school students, who are typical of all the residents, will likely have the public transportation. So, this is an area that I have constituents calling in, asking, you know, this is a white paper without letterhead or anything, it's up on a phone call saying our bus stop's being deleted. So, I'm not quite sure what is going on with the MBTA, but to, I think there's more, quote un, this definitely is not a matter that would have been anticipated. I know it's something that we've had long conversation, and I wish the at-large council would receive the word council in regards to concern, because that has been up as something I've heard about in a while. Thank you.
Well, again, I, with, again, the pressure, I certainly, neither of us is a stranger to this issue, Councilor. Again, my sense of frustration has nothing to do with anything in relation to your performance related to this at this point. My concern is that the mixed answers that I continuously received related to public safety, and that's kind of the issue that I do want to get at to determine, are we, is this really, Councilor? And again, in a part in relation to the, to the, what our abilities are here, can we reorganize this related to specific safety issues in our local city? So, it's not, again, there's no intent here to have it reflect on anything you are or not in relation to this issue. I think we have discussed this specifically in the past, but you're saying you weren't aware that they're stopping there, and I just, I just found out the other day that they are, so with that...
No, I'm saying I'm not aware, excuse me for personal relation, not aware that this is hot item, that would not have made the agenda, right? So, if it cannot be readily anticipated, and if no meaning law that we need to follow, to me, this is something that's been kind of ongoing chronic issue, that come in at this point, a motion to go to resolution is not coming on the agenda. I guess, for me, it's, I see it as no meaning or violation. That's all.
Again, given the fact that I became aware of this, this is the last meeting until September, I think it's a pretty, pretty, again, to be, having a good meeting violation when your colleagues would ask me for a study. I believe that my finding out of this, at the time, is that I did specifically use to correctly get that it's more than appropriate to offer this.
Okay.
If you wish to reject, Councilor, feel free, but you've already certainly raised serious issues related to it.
All right, so there's a resolved motion to pass or resolve. Is there a second?
I'm actually asking for a order of a study.
Okay.
I get it.
So, in like order for us? So, if we can, we need a, we need a statement. Are you thinking of vote, Councilor?
Yes, I would, like, all it's, it's requesting a study of the fire department. If we can't do that, why would we?
All right, I understand. Let me see.
Point of parliamentary...
Yeah, Councilor Palmetto?
Through you, perhaps, Councilor Finn, it's a resolution asking for a study, it's not an order, because the order would require apprehending, correct? So, all you're seeking is a resolution, calling for a study by the fire department, correct?
Which is quite uncertain.
Okay.
Call, all I want is I want, I'll break, follow the resolution, I'll be back with an order that we can, that we'll put out. I don't feel it needs other filming meeting law, given the timeliness of this particular matter, and the, my discovery of this only the other day, and this is occurring, I've heard, I've been told that it's not there, that, again, but finally, it's a resolution, so here, be resolved by the fire department. I will be back in the fall regardless.
Got it.
And if I can't get a study through the fire department, then perhaps what I, I will do is seek that independently to this issue. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask through something that's been going on since 2011, that we already have a letter from the fire department saying it's a public safety issue, to get greater clarification as to that mess. So, do I have a second under resolution?
All right, so it's a resolution, is there a second? Okay, second, I have Council Palmetto. Okay, it's seconded. So, Council, Madam Clark?
Council King?
Yes.
Council Crowell?
Yes.
Council King?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Council LaFors?
Yes.
President Hughes?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Scheduling the committee meetings or putting hearings, anyone? All right, our next council meeting is going to be, what I believe is going to be September 12th, it might be, it is slated right now for September 6th, we may have to amend the schedule for that, but I will contact you over the summer. Everyone has a wonderful summer, and just so folks know, we're not off, you can email us any concerns, I think we'd watch it, awesome, except for, don't, don't email the Madam Clark, but thank you all for a wonderful summer, we'll see you back in September. Motion to return, Council Palmetto. Great, all this is paper. Yay, great. Yeah, it's quick, yeah. I love it. It is special.